Let's go ahead and begin. The time is 4:07. I have a number of yellow cards, just as a matter of housekeeping. We did relax the parking out in front of the building in the lot for this item. So that's not something that you'll have to concern yourselves with this evening. The other item is, I probably have, just judging from the stack of cards, maybe about thirty or forty of these yellow cards. As is the tradition, when we have a large amount of folks who are out here for public comment, what we do is, we offer folks an opportunity to make comments for two minutes. And so, at two minutes times, you know, if we have thirty cards here, that's gonna be thirty, it's gonna be two hours of public comment, which is fantastic, we like to see. Thank you. We love to see folks come out and participate in the process. And so, we'll go ahead and get started. So this is the four o'clock item, actions relating to marijuana within the city of Fresno. Just have a couple of comments before we begin. The citizens of Fresno and California have given us the power to regulate cannabis, to break the monopoly, and end the violence of criminal gangs on our streets. In an effort to combat criminal gangs and cartels who have a monopoly on drug profits in our community, I would like to begin by making a motion to approve the amendment of the municipal code regarding marijuana, and adopt a resolution of intention to initiate a text amendment to permit and regulate both recreational and medical marijuana dispensaries and testing facilities in industrial districts with a CUP, with direction to, for city staff to return to the city council for final approval by November 1st of 2017. And that is my motion. Okay, thank you, folks. Let's let the council colleagues work here.
I'll just second for discussion purposes only.
Okay, thank you. So, city attorney was... So the motion is obviously not what the sponsor of, the sponsors of the item wanted to bring this afternoon. So I've made a different motion. So a different motion is on the floor. So I guess the next thing that we do is go out to the public for public comment, correct?
That would be within the council president's discretion, yes.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to go out to the public for, take public comment.
Council President, can we ask clarification questions?
Absolutely.
So, because I might not get clarification for your motion, just by listening to the public, so...
Okay.
So, would you do me a favor and repeat the whole thing again, please?
Yeah, I, and I don't know, city attorney, if this is correct. I kind of, I came up with it on my own and tried to write it out. Yes. So I, I believe that the citizens of Fresno and California, with the passage of Prop 64 in the state, in the city, and also in the district in which I represent, have given us, the city council, the power to regulate marijuana, and the power to break the monopoly, and end the violence of criminal gangs on our streets. In an effort to combat those gangs and cartels who currently have a monopoly on illegal drug profits, I make a motion to approve the amendment that is being brought, of the Fresno Municipal Code Regarding the Cultivation of Marijuana, and adopt today a resolution of intent to begin the text amendment to permit and regulate both recreational and medicinal marijuana dispensaries and testing facilities in industrial districts with a CUP, conditional use permit, and instruct staff to return to council for final approval on or before November 1st of this year.
Okay, and then, one of my questions is, when you say approve the amendment, is that approve what amendment? What amendment?
The amendment that, the text amendment that's being brought is being...
Brought by Councilman Brettafeld and the mayor?
I'm making a motion to approve that, but take out the part that bans marijuana and goes instead the different direction.
So, so their amendment talks about prohibiting retail sales of recreational marijuana only, I believe.
Right.
So, you want to approve that? So you, you're willing to put a stop?
No, I'm gutting that, and I'm substituting different language.
Then why do you say approve the amendment?
Did I, am I doing this right?
Well, council, recall, there are two things in front of the council today. One is dealing with cultivation. I understand your motion is to approve or that, the cultivation restrictions, and then separately, approve initiating a text amendment, but, instead of prohibiting it, allowing it.
This, all this does, Member Brandau, and sponsors, all this does is it instructs city staff to come back to us with something, a package of comprehensive regulations, and then they will return to us with that for approval at a later date.
But what you're allowing, your motion is to approve, allow, the opposite of what we're trying to do, which is to allow the recreational dispensaries in the city of Fresno.
That's correct, Member Brettafeld.
That's your motion.
Yes.
And I would ask that we vote on that right now, not go out to the audience, we're gonna go out to the audience, but that you've made a motion that's different than what we, it's on the agenda, and you have that, you have it seconded, we should vote on it.
Counsel, we do have to hear public comment before you can vote on any motion.
All right. And so, so I just got thrown off by, I kind of understand what you're doing.
That was the intention.
Yeah, I know. Okay, right. I kind of get thrown off. Yeah. And so, I got thrown off by the part that, inside of your comment, you say approve the amendment, so you're actually not approving, although you just...
I am.
You're not approving the prohibition.
Is this similar to a gut and amend that they do, like in Sacramento, where they basically take out the contents of a piece of legislation and put their own language in?
Effect, it's approving an amendment, it's not the same thing, the same topic, but in a different way, yes.
Okay, so you're not approving their amendment, which includes a prohibition of retail marijuana dispensaries?
It's the amendment of the sections, so I mean, I think maybe we're...
Okay, all right, I'm a lot clearer now.
Okay. So that's what we'll go ahead and do, is go out to the, oh, it's city manager, Mayor Brand.
Can you hear me now? Okay. With all due respect, Council President, I think this is a shortcut procedure. I think we need to hear this debate up or down today, as proposed, as a ban on recreational marijuana. So, I would respectfully ask the council if you want to take a vote on it. You have that discretion as council president, but I think we're going on a kind of a slippery slope here, as far as procedures, or maybe other issues that come up that we're gonna want to fully debate, and we can hear from a lot of people listening. So I think it's, in my opinion, I'd rather go and hear this debate. If you think the four members or more decide they want to go a different direction, then so be it, let the chips fall as they may, but I think we need to hear this argument as presented.
And thank you, Mayor, for that. All this motion does is it changes the, 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 the motion changes the item. I don't think that the comments are going to change. Folks are still going to argue for and against cannabis this evening, whether, you know, the folks who are for it are for it, and the people who are here against it are gonna remain against it. It's just a different motion, but the same topic. And if it's, if it's okay with the city attorney, I mean, the council president has the discretion to go out to the public on the motion, right?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, so...
I'm asking.
Okay. And thank you, Mayor. So, Member Soria?
So just for, I guess, purpose of clarification, will there be two votes? Or is this a substitute? I'm just trying to...
Right now, there is a main motion on the floor. It's different than what was proposed, but there is a main motion.
So that main motion would be voted first?
So the options at this point are, well, to have your hearing, and somebody could either make a motion to amend that motion, and you would take that vote first, or you would vote up or down on the first main motion, dispense with that, and then if necessary, have another motion and vote on that.
So with that, we'll go out to the public and begin public comment. So you understand, right, that if this, if the motion that council president made, me, if my motion fails, then it would be a good time for another, someone else to make a motion, and obviously, it's gonna pass if this one fails. So, we've got about thirty cards.
I'm sorry, I make it, I have to leave at about five or 5:15 for the meeting, so, but I'll stay here till then.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, at this time, we'll begin public comment. Our first speaker is Andrea Lomascola. Please come forward. Our next speaker after Andrea will be Arthur Anderson. Our third speaker will be Ted Miller. So I'm, I, when we have large crowds, what we do is we call three or four folks, and then that way, you know it's your turn, you can even begin lining up sometimes behind the speaker, and then that way, it's a better use of time, we can get folks heard, and be respectful of everyone's time. Please give us your name and address for the record, and then you will have two minutes.
All righty. Andrea Lomascola, and I live at 270 South Argyle Avenue, number 106 in Fresno. And the reason I'm here today is I just am worried that you're taking away my access to the medication that I'm trying to use to alleviate taking pharmaceuticals, which are just too much for me, and I just don't understand, we worked so hard, Prop 215 passed, and it's like now it's getting cut down and cut down, little pieces, and I'm just worried that you guys are gonna take everything away, and make me have to go to Bakersfield, or San Francisco, Oakland, to get my medication, when it should be available to me here, close by, providing taxes for our city, which we desperately need to not share with all these other bigger cities that have already passed this, and this has been looked at for a long time. And I don't see any reason why it's being taken away from us, I really don't. And other than that, I really don't have too much more to say, I just want to keep my medicine, it's natural, God made it, I'm not taking as many pharmaceuticals as I was when I was first diagnosed with MS, and I'm feeling a lot better, so, if we can keep it, I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. What you just heard was a one-minute chime, so when you get halfway through, you'll hear a chime, it doesn't mean you have to stop, it means it's notice that you have a minute remaining.
I was actually done.
Okay, well, you did great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arthur Anderson. Arthur Anderson, and then Ted Miller, and then Teresa Rose Wiles. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Arthur Anderson, 5394 East Burns. Pretty much in the same boat as the young lady ahead of me. My wife and I worked on campaigns back in eighty and eighty-two, and it's been a long time coming for this, and I think that the laws that the state has come up with, it would be good to go by. I would like to see you take and make it, so that I don't have to go out of town to get my medicine, or take a chance on something else. Thank you much.
Thank you for your comments. Brianna, can you move the podium up a little bit for folks? Because the podium has a switch on it that moves up and down, so if you're tall, we want to be able to hear you, it moves the microphone closer to your mouth. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes, please.
My name is Ted Miller, Box 24, Carruthers, California. Regarding the cultivation citation, the cultivation ordinance, I feel that it's flawed. Councilwoman Soria, with your degree from Davis Law, and you're admitted to the bar, you know a lot more about this, so I'm gonna stumble, because I'm not a lawyer. I believe that the cultivation ordinance, it provides unreasonable search and seizure. A police officer comes into your yard, or on the street, sticks his nose up in the air, goes, "I smell pot, I smell pot growing." Now he can seize it, and charge you $1,000 per plant. No due process. I think it's fatally flawed, okay? I think it's intended to make the cultivation in a private space of marijuana illegal, and the law doesn't allow you to do that. Prop 64 passed, okay? So, that's deeply flawed, and I'm against that. Regarding retail sales of marijuana, we want to have legal licensed retail sales of marijuana, because we do not want to support the black market. I understand that Councilman Brettafeld feels very strongly about his opposition to marijuana. I understand there are many people here concerned about, who strongly oppose marijuana. That's okay. It has passed in California, we're not going to keep marijuana out of Fresno, because Prop 64 passed. People can possess marijuana. They should be allowed to grow it within the confines of their, of their home, or on their property, or on attachment buildings. Having legal licensed retailers, I'm running out of time. We don't worry about the thirteen-year-old coming home from middle school and picking up a twelve-pack of Budweiser and two cartons of Marlboros, okay? Because those are sold by licensed sellers. We need to have licensed sellers, and also, finally, I don't want to have a big war about this in our community, so that the children get to see a lot of us saying marijuana is okay, it's better for you than alcohol. We don't need to have that shouting match in our community for the next two years. Thank you, thank you very much.
We have Teresa Rose Wiles, and Jim Franklin, and Robert...
Hi, I'm Teresa Rose Wiles, and I appreciate the time to speak with you all today. I am a cannabis patient, and I served in the Army from 1985 to 1987, including in South Korea. I have multiple service-connected health conditions. I, after that, I had, got out of the military, I had my four children, who were all in the Gifted and Talented Program here in Fresno, they went through CompuTech, they went through Manchester Gate, they got accepted into state and city colleges. And, and two of my, two of my children in early adulthood developed a rare brain disease called idiopathic intracranial hypertension, and there is no cure. And their lives were taken away from them. And I've seen a lot of physical suffering in my friends, church-going people, who are addicted to Oxycontin, nice next-door ladies addicted to codeine. These things are really destructive, and I'm a person who has a strong sensitivity to these kinds of medications, due to a genotype that I have, they make me very ill. If you take this option away from me, or bar my access, it's gonna create hardship for me, and for many, many other people who are suffering, and who want a safer alternative. I also want to talk to you about bias. We all have a lot of cultural bias around the word marijuana, which is not actually the real name for the plant. I also had that bias. I was a nice church-going lady for a very long time, and I had fear about those things. And due to increased pain, I started to examine my options. So many failed medications, baskets and baskets full of pills, I don't have to take anymore. You know, we need to look at our biases, and start listening to both sides, and start learning the science, and start really hearing what the truth is, and not just what we think and our phobia about people who are different than us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Franklin, Robert Huggins, Derek Payton, please give us your name and address. For the record, you'll have two minutes.
Jim Franklin, 1554 Fulton, Senior Pastor of Cornerstone Church. Members of the council, a little confused today about all of the legal maneuvering in that, so let me just tell you, I'm here to address the recreational marijuana dispensaries. I've seen it as a, as a bad thing, use of recreational marijuana, as a pastor of a church. We talked about Prop 64 passing, it did pass, but remember, in that, they gave you the power to regulate it on a local basis. It wasn't just a statewide pass to say it's gonna be this way everywhere, it gave you, as city officials, that responsibility then, to see how will we regulate this? If in passing that, and I think that's one of the reasons that it did pass the way that it did, because it then had empowered local municipalities, the ability then to make those decisions. I would encourage you then, to make that decision, to ban the use of recreational, or recreational dispensaries, because of the damage that it can do. We talk about money that could be gained, some things are not worth the money that we gain from things. I'm used to quoting a book a lot, about a guy who sold his birthright for a bowl of beans, because it was immediate need, and it meant something they needed right then, but yet he sold away his future. I've seen unfortunately, the impact upon youth that recreational marijuana has, and the readily available, it would be even more, by allowing it to be available across the counter. So I encourage you, for that reason, to vote for a ban on recreational marijuana dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Robert Huggins, Derek Payton.
Good evening, my name is Robert Huggins. I'm a medical marijuana patient, we need more storefronts, more information for people that want to use medical marijuana, or even recreational marijuana. We did pass 64, we, what's gonna happen? I mean, are we gonna have storefronts? Are you guys gonna make it legal, or illegal? We just need a chance to get ahead and everybody be happy, but that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. We have Derek Payton, James Alipar, and Rod Lowry. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
My name is Derek Payton, I live at 708 East Buckingham Way in Fresno. I love this city. I've lived all over California, southern, central, northern, and Fresno is the only city that I've genuinely come to care about. I want to help Fresno be the best version of itself that it can be, and I want the best for its citizens. California passed Prop 64, and more importantly, so did the citizens of Fresno. Yes, you have the power to regulate it, but you should regulate it according to the will of the people. The people have spoken, the voters have spoken. Legal marijuana is here, regardless of your personal stance on the plant. You can ban it, or you can tax it and regulate it. Regardless, growers will still grow, recreational and medicinal users will still use. I've come to you in the past, as a citizen of Fresno, a patients' rights advocate, and a medical marijuana patient. Medical cannabis has been the name of the game thus far, but the passing of Prop 64 opens a new door for discussion. This, the almighty dollar. Mayor Brand, estimated $10 million in potential tax revenue for the city. That's money that could be used to have more cops on the streets, create safer streets. Money that could be used in education in schools, and to invest in the next generation of Fresnoans. I will gladly, gladly pay for safe, legal access to cannabis. So please, take my money and vote no on the ban. I am all for regulating, and creating safe access for the people of the city of Fresno. Thank you.
James Alipar, Rod Lowry, Michael Cunningham. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
It's actually James Alipas, and 1375 North San Pablo.
Thank you.
93727. I'm really here to discuss the black market, because that's what this is, that's what this supports, that's what the current ban supports, that, you know, keeps patients from being able to grow their own plants in their backyard. It doesn't stop anybody from getting marijuana, it stops a few of these patients that have already been up here, talking about their, I could talk about my health problems, I could talk about how I have Tourette's, and how it makes me talk really fast like this, and how it makes me twitch all over the place, and how it makes me really unable to function without my medication, but people have much worse problems than me, and they're gonna be up here talking about how they can't function without their medication either. The real problem is that they're gonna get it from people who will, who kill people. There are murderers who work in the black market, who grow mountains' worth of weed in every county in this, in this state, and they are willing to sell, and they're excited about bans like this, because bans like this, they vote for them, because it raises their profit margins. Right now, they're bemoaning that they only get this much, this much per pound, but they can double that as soon as bans like this go through in counties like this. This is a huge county, and there are people up north waiting for this ban to go through, so that they can double their pound prices, and still make the same amount, the same sales, the same people are still gonna get their marijuana. It's just now there's no rules whether twelve-year-olds can get it. At a recreational dispensary, or a, or a medical dispensary, the rules state, I've worked at many of them, you get fired if you break the rules, because that, you're, you're putting the entire establishment at risk, you're putting all these hundreds of thousands of patients at risk, so you don't violate. If somebody comes in with a expired card, or they're under 21, under the new law, you don't service them, because you don't want to put your business and all of your patients at risk. So that's how the regulation works. When you don't regulate something, when you leave it banned like this, and keep, and I get why, that's why I like Mr. Olivier's amendment, because it sounds like the reason we're doing this, is because it's easier to extend the ban that was already in place, than it is to build the infrastructure of regulating in Fresno County. And I know it's easier, it's always easier to ban things, but we've learned since the 20s that that doesn't work, so let's not.
Welcome, Rod. Please give us your name and address for the record, then you'll have two minutes.
Rodney Lowry, my address, 2326 Fresno Street, City of Fresno, and I'm the chaplain for the Fresno Police Department. I think what we're discussing is really accessibility. Unfortunately, comments have been made that alcohol and tobacco are not impacting our youth. The truth is, tobacco use among adolescents is up. We have our alcohol beverage control organizations that have to regularly go into businesses and cite liquor stores who are selling alcohol to minors. In Fresno, in the last three months, we've had over 2,400 calls involving youth and trauma. Many, 5150 self-committals, in our high schools and our middle schools. Approximately 177 self-committals of drug use and mental health, in the last 90 days at our middle schools and high schools. With these calls involving trauma to our youth, they will self-medicate. If we make it accessible, these kids will get to the drugs more easily. It's gonna happen. Voting to move forward with legalizing dispensaries was tearing out the heart of all nonprofits that are working to save that risk in our community. It's not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael. Everyone, let's, everyone, we're respectful to one another, we all live in this town together, so, let's, let's bring that in here. There's a lot of courageous people in this room that are speaking out for what they believe tonight, and putting their, sticking their necks out, so let's, let's be respectful to everyone. Thank you. All right, Michael Cunningham, give us your name and address for the record.
Michael Cunningham, 1671 East Bulldog Lane, Apartment 154, 93710, yeah. I'm here to speak about the medical part of it, because if you're gonna, like, get rid of dispensaries and delivery services, you're forcing the patients, no other way but to go to the drug dealers, which I will not do, and assume that risk of getting either arrested or hurt because of that problem. Pharmaceuticals have messed up my body significantly, due to my Tourette's, I've had to take medication for like nineteen years, I was ruining my liver, and caused muscle problems due to it. The cannabis relieves some of the medical problems, not the liver damage, that's done already from the medicine, but, you know, so, prohibition against all marijuana is a bad idea. Alcohol kills more innocent people than weed could ever, you pass out the wheel with alcohol or you're not gonna pass out, hopefully, it's less likely you'll pass out from marijuana. Yes, your cognitive ability is diminished, but alcohol can knock you out like that, and you won't know when you get in a wreck, till you wake up and you're in the jail, or in a hospital. So I guess that's it, just please do not pass this, and at least keep the medical marijuana dispensaries open, and if you want to put more restrictions, so they're getting more trouble if they sell the recreational. I'm not saying recreational is bad or good, I just, my opinion is, keep the medical in place, at least. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we have Zee Zhang, Christopher Leal, and James White, Elias Loera. All right, give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Zee Zhang, 4550 East Fountain Way. I'm, I'm a... I'm, I'm here to beg you guys to not ban marijuana, because banning it, well, it won't, it's not going to prevent anybody that wants to use it from using it. And as a former user, when I wanted to use it, it didn't matter if it was legal or if it was not, I was gonna get it. So it's a waste of time, and you, what you're gonna do is you're just gonna send people to, a user to jail, and it costs like $30,000 a year to house somebody in jail, and that's a lot of savings from, just economically, and it's, it doesn't work. Banning it won't work, we need a, I mean, if you, if you guys want to stop marijuana use, you need another solution, because it's not gonna work, because, I mean, it's been tried in the past for so long, and it still doesn't work, so we need a, a new method, and that's it.
Thank you. Christopher Liel, come forward, give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes. You'll be followed by James White, Elias Loera, and Brenda Linder.
Hi, my name is Christopher Liel. My address is 9711 South Valentine. Good evening to all of you guys. I'd like to give a thanks to the people that came and supported, also with the people that are, have something to say against it. It takes a lot of us just to come down here and do what we do. Last time I was here is about a month ago, and it was a very good eye-opening experience. What I'd like to say is that I kinda like the way you're taking away cer, not taking away certain things, you're trying to rephrase it, still give us a hope and chance to still have what we're looking for. I noticed that there's a lot of local law enforcement in the house with us today, so just like myself and everybody else that comes up here, we have a target on our back. It really doesn't matter. If police can't come somewhat to an agreement with the patients and people like myself, we're always gonna feel like there's a target behind our back. We can be used as criminals, just like anybody off the street that's doing something worse than what we're doing. I'm a very big supporter of the Prop 215 and 64 with certain regulations, whatever, obviously, if it's up to you guys. I would love it if it was up to the people of Fresno, if we can state something together, and you can have one side of the people, one side of the council, maybe we can put something together right there and work as a system, as a city, as a county, not against each other. A lot of people say we gotta work together, and sometimes it's just hoopla to keep us with that hope. It's like the fishing string. You got the carrot above our heads, and you're gonna continue to dangle and dangle and dangle until your wire's down. Obviously, we're not going nowhere. Everybody's here. And like I said, we got, everyone has a demon that passes them, even within our law enforcement. I've, I've met Mr. Dyer when I was in FCA camp, when I was 18-years-old. He told me about his trials and tribulations as a young man, and now he leads, he leads our city, you know what I mean? So we all have problems, we all eventually get through them, and there's, there's ways to get through it. And if we can't see it that way, then obviously, we should just come in here with blindfolds and just act silly, and take the free AC right now in Fresno. But other than that, I really do appreciate you guys still trying to help us out. I appreciate everybody that came, and I think we can really come to a really good conclusion if we all really put our heads to it. It comes on both sides. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. James White. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is James White. I request an exception regarding stating my address. Is that all right? You have it on the card, yes. I'm here to request permission from this steam body to, to, to look at the projections that are being made by the city of Fresno relative to the revenue and expenses associated with the cannabis project, the cannabis debate. My professional designation is Certified Public Accountant. Do I have your permission to look at those calculations?
We can absolutely furnish those to you. I don't know it's contained, I mean, it's, we're not gonna be able to get it for you right now, but we're happy to furnish any public documents with you.
Oh, it's a process, I understand that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who would I contact?
Oh, let me see. I'll have, I'll have your council members' office call you, and you can work with, through them to get you that information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. Hi, welcome. Give us your name and address for the record, then you'll have two minutes.
Pastor Elias Loera, 535 North Cedar, Christian Temple Assembly of God. I also represent the Fresno Clovis Pastors' Clusters, which is 281 churches in this town and over 100,000 constituents. I'm also speaking for BT Lewis, and Paul Binion, and Dr. Jim Cece. We spiritually and morally have a problem with dispensaries in our community. I pastor on the corner of Cedar and Belmont. People in my neighborhood, my neighborhood don't know how to do anything in moderation. We party hard, we drink hard, we celebrate hard, and you're our council member. At Cedar and Belmont, people do not know how to do things in moderation. I don't want you guys to be fooled into thinking that Fresno's the next Aspen, Colorado. It's not. People on, on my side of town, and I'm gonna tell you something, the dispensaries are not gonna go north of Shaw, they're gonna be south of Shaw. So if you vote for the dispensaries, what you're voting for is just, just like there's three liquor stores around my church, I guarantee you there'll be three dispensaries. And they won't be nice, and they won't be clean, and they won't be protected with security, they're gonna be tore up from the floor up. So I'm asking you, please, do not bring this back to my part of town. I got nothing against the people that are asking, and I don't, I think most of them are asking about medication, not recreation. I'm against the recreational sales. And let me tell you something, as far as the black market, when they started allowing people to grow, more crime started happening, and people that were growing it were being shot at and murdered. The black market is cheaper than that high-priced taxed marijuana. So it's still gonna be there. Now, I fought in three wars in U.S. Special Operations Command, U.S. SOCOM. I jumped out of airplanes into combat. I fought the Cali cartel. And right now, the sheriff and the chief will tell you, the cartels are in Fresno County, and they're growing acres and acres of marijuana. Please don't help them with the distribution process.
Brenda Linder, Joan McGuire, Griselda Arroyo, give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have two minutes.
Brenda Linder, 10474 North O'Hinni. For the record, I don't use cannabis medicinally, recreationally, or otherwise. I have two adult children. I have, take my word for it, had access to marijuana for about 10 years, unlimited access. Neither my children nor I use it. So if access in and of itself created use or abuse, it's not happening like that. I support council members, and I'm gonna speak as fast as I can, so I'm gonna read off my paper here. I support Councilmember Olivier's opinion on the issue. The continued prohibition is counterproductive and largely unenforceable. The city has had the opportunity to regulate medicinal cannabis since 1996, excuse me, but instead has chose to follow the head-in-the-sand mentality, which allows the black market to flourish, while the city forfeits legitimate and substantial tax revenue that could be, benefit the community, along with a common sense approach to allocation of law enforcement resources. The current medical cannabis bans have not resulted in achieving any stated purpose. Under the new adult use, hundreds of thousands or more people in this county will be allowed to possess and use cannabis. The question is not whether you will allow this market to exist, but rather, who will be in control of the market? The city and law enforcement, or the black market and cartels? The city needs legislators who are governed by common sense and the big-picture solutions, and not by long-refuted marijuana propaganda. The city clearly is in no position to make law enforcement and marijuana bans a priority. Law enforcement needs to prioritize meth, gangs, murders, and the epidemic of opiate abuse at this point. Not one of my clients in either the city or the county has paid one dime in the fines that have been imposed, yet the city and the county both have expended in, somewhere up hundreds of thousands of dollars in attempt, was that the first or second?
That's the second.
Okay.
It's the second one, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I have Joan McGuire, Griselda Arroyo, and then Jonathan Zwickel. Hi.
Hi, well, this is, I believe my-
Oh, I'm sorry, give us your, your name and address, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Joan Byrd. My address is 1567 North Wilson Avenue, Fresno, California. This is my, I believe, my fourth visit back to, to speak to you about medical marijuana. I'm retired law enforcement, and I, I believe that the reason, one of the reasons that we have so much gang problem is because it's been allowed, they, no one else had any place else to go to get their medical cannabis. You had to buy it from people that were despicable, people that were gang members. That's the only place you had to go to get it. I feel very secure and very safe knowing that there is a dispensary that I can walk into, that is regulated. I can tell you that I did not get my, my medical marijuana card replaced in time. I went to the dispensary, and I was turned away. So they are regulating themselves. Don't put it in the hands of the gang members. Don't put it in, in those people's hands for me to have to get my medical marijuana and for the rest of these people that are out here. No, I don't think, I, I don't think that it's, for minors, I definitely think that it's just, it was like the prohibition time, you know? There was a lot of crime over it, and, and that's what we're seeing. We're seeing gang members, we're seeing despicable people that we have to go and get our cannabis from, without the dispensaries and without the availability of, of a place for us to get it. So I just ask that you take those things into consideration and realize that by having a place for us to go, you will stop some of the, the, the gang violence and the things that are going on in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Griselda Arroyo, followed by Jonathan Zwickel, followed by Pastor Rob Cravy.
Hello.
Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Griselda Arroyo, 2575 South Willow Avenue. This is my first time here. Should've been here a long time ago. I've been a user of cannabis, marijuana, for over 20-years now. I'm a single parent of two children. I go to college, I go to school. I could do everything I need to do on a daily basis as the next person would, that wouldn't use. Also, there's just so much that's going in my mind, sorry. For medical purposes, there's just so many medical conditions that you can use marijuana instead of taking prescription medications, which is killing people, and that does not work. For me, I don't have to take my, my Zolo, my antidepressant, because I have marijuana. Whether it's legalized or not, like the other fellow said, I'm still gonna use too. I think this ban is just horrible, this is just ridiculous. If y'all can legalize alcohol, which kill people all the time, all the time, and marijuana, have you heard of anybody dying? I mean, did I wreck my car because I was so stoned or something? I mean, I mean, that's just how I feel. It's just, don't do this ban, it's just ridiculous. And then also, I mean, for, for medical purposes, I mean, it's gonna be taxed, it could go to our schools, it could go to like the police department, like y'all said. Drugs are gonna come from everywhere too. Whether the cartel brings it or not, it's gonna be here. People are gonna make it. Y'all have a real bad meth problem here in Fresno. I see it all the time. Heroin addicts as well. I mean, if you guys come from the hood, then you'll understand what I'm talking about. So that's why I'm going to college, 'cause I wanna go forward with medical marijuana and make a better life for my kids and get out of the ghetto. 'Cause unfortunately, yeah, there is ghetto. We gotta help each other out, just like the other guy said too. So I hope y'all hear, hear us out, the rest of y'all, especially the one that doesn't wanna look at me. Y'all have a good night.
We thank you. Thank you for your comment. Jonathan Zwickel, please give us your name and address for the record, and then we have Pastor Rob, and then we have Sue Stone.
My name is Jonathan Zwickel, 1717 East Bullard Avenue, here in Fresno. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying that I voted against Prop 64. I think it was just a overwritten, overblown law, just too much. I'd like to say that, as a Vietnam veteran, I smoked marijuana for a long period of time, and when I was smoking, I was more addicted to potato chips than I was to marijuana. I haven't smoked in like 20-years, but I think I reserve the right to do that if and when I think it is the right thing to do, just as all of us reserve the right to go home and have a beer, or a glass of wine, or a cocktail. Okay. I sent out an email to hopefully all the members of the city council, basically stating that a ban on the legal sale of marijuana is job security for drug dealers. I will say that again, a ban on medical marijuana, oh, excuse me, all marijuana, is a bill that gives job security of drug dealers, because there is no legal place where they can otherwise get it. Some of us might be familiar with the 18th Amendment to the Constitution, prohibition. What that resulted in was the growth and the power of organized crime, which was a terrible thing in this country. A definition of insanity is to keep on doing the same thing and expecting a different result. We've been trying to do things about drugs, the war on drugs, and things haven't changed. Trying to ban something when the public says we want it is just never going to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes as well.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Pastor Rob Cravy, Chief Operating Officer, Fresno Rescue Mission, 310 G Street. Fresno Rescue Mission is in support of the marijuana recreational ban here in Fresno. Arguments can be made, and have been made globally on both sides of the issues, in regards to control and use by adults recreationally, whether marijuana is a gateway drug to other addictions, the positive and negative impacts of legalization of marijuana, and what it may have impact-wise on our social system, all of which can be argued. The studies conducted on youth are conclusive. It hurts them. It decreases their emotional development, their academical retention, it hinders their social interactions, excuse me, it increases the risk of depression and anxiety, and youth who are exposed to marijuana are three times more likely than their non-smoking peers to think about suicide. Programmatically, from the Fresno Rescue Mission, 85% of our clients have used marijuana prior to being 16-years of age. It hurt them. The decision a child makes to use has been hampered here in the U.S. by the media, the war on drugs, Red Ribbon Week, which we still have in existence today in our schools, the DARE program, the fear of the laws that we have put into place, and the availability of the drug itself keeps them from making that decision. By legalizing recreational use in California, we've increased the availability, which makes the decision that much easier for our children and our grandchildren to choose. The Fresno Rescue Mission supports any ban that helps make the decision for our youth more difficult to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Sue Stone, Booker Lewis, Alexandros Osado, Bill McPike. Welcome, please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
Greetings, council members. My name is Sue Stone. I'm a family physician with a practice in North Fresno, and I also see patients at an Adventist clinic that serves primarily Medi-Cal patients. I have chronic pain patients at both places, although I see a lot more at the Adventist clinics. As you know, we are in the middle of an opiate crisis. It has been my experience that having medical marijuana available reduces or eliminates the need for narcotic prescriptions. While marijuana may not be the harmless drug that many would have you believe, it is light-years safer than opiates. In particular, it does not carry with it the risk of death from overdose. There is some evidence from NIH Department of Drug Abuse Studies that areas with legal marijuana have lower opiate use and overdose rates. That should be our goal. My patients also use marijuana for sleep and anxiety. Again, much safer than sleeping pills and sedatives. Again, much safer than sleeping pills and sedatives. This ban would make it nearly impossible for patients to grow their own supply. You may or may not know that our current attorney general is trying to convince Congress to overturn the amendment passed in 2014 that prevents the Justice Department from using federal funds to enforce federal prohibition in states with legal marijuana laws. Fortunately, medical marijuana enjoys strong bipartisan support and he is unlikely to be successful. It's a foolish idea and shows ignorance of the medical facts. This proposal is foolish. I urge you to vote no. I live and work in District 6, and I'm disappointed this came from my councilperson. I recently completed an expert review for the California Medical Board on a marijuana complaint. It is unfortunate and somewhat ironic that medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation are already illegal in the city of Fresno. It really makes sense to reverse this prohibition. I would be happy to sit on an ad hoc committee to help the city draft regulations, as is happening all around the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Booker Lewis, Alexandros Asado, and then Bill McPike. Please give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll, yeah, Pastor Lewis.
Sorry, me?
No, it's okay, that's fine.
Okay. So I'm Russell Douglas, and my address is 40519 North Jackson Avenue. I hope you won't mind if I just read what I wrote. "I don't use, distribute, or cultivate cannabis, but I'm suspicious of an ultimately futile ban that would criminalize medical patients, make it easier for kids to obtain marijuana, create victimless crimes, perpetuate the criminal monopoly that robs the city coffers of revenue, and distracts police from pursuing legitimate crimes. Will the coalition of bootleggers and Baptists be crusading against alcohol next? Protecting us from ourselves is not a legitimate function of government. So I implore the city council to represent the will of the people and oppose the ban. Learn from history, prohibition does not work, and it creates more problems than it solves." That's all.
Thank you. Now Pastor Lewis, and then Alexandros Asado, and Bill McPike.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Pastor B.T. Lewis, pastor of the Rising Star Missionary Baptist Church in the southwestern addition of our city. Uh, my favorite councilman, Councilman Baines, uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, I absolutely, uh, oh, you don't like that cow? Okay, my, my second, okay. I, uh, but I absolutely empathize with those that are using medical marijuana, prescribed, regulated, uh, 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 medic, medical marijuana. Uh, I'm here to, uh, ask that the council follow through on a ban of recreational marijuana. Uh, I'm here to encourage you to, uh, to help you understand, uh, that the rev, I understand the revenue projections, uh, associated with the proposal of marijuana dispensaries, um, in our city, but, uh, all money is not good money, which is a lesson that we have to teach in our communities all the time. And so the passage of Proposition 64 literally changed people's perception of marijuana. Our children are assuming that marijuana is okay to use. I've had more instances of teenagers, I have a 13-year-old and a 14-year-old right now that, uh, that I'm dealing with right now, these past two weeks, who are stealing cars, stealing from their parents. Uh, this just started, it's a few weeks ago, busting out the house, uh, driving around illegally. One is in rehab now in Modesto. Uh, the other one, we haven't figured out where we can send him. And, and, and I've seen an uptick of, of those kind of behaviors since the beginning of the year. And so I'm asking our council to please ban, uh, recreational dispensaries in our city because I know they're gonna show up down the street from my house, they're gonna show up down the street from my church, and I know it's gonna be a crazy impact in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lewis. Alexandros Asado, and then Bill McPike, and then Kim Castro.
I lifted up almost. Uh, good afternoon, everybody, representatives, uh, the public. I'm so glad to see you here, and this is my first time ever speaking in front of, uh, City Hall.
Thank you, can you give us?
My name is Alex Asado, uh, 3794 West Stewart, Fresno. And, God, I mean, I'm not even gonna talk about medical marijuana because I feel that if you don't understand, and if you haven't read, and if you haven't done this, your own investigation on this, and if you're making a decision to ban it without actually looking at what the American Medical Association says, and what all the, mostly, you look at the social studies, and what, and what all the research and the medical studies about marijuana, let's not even talk about that because if you're against that, then that is, obviously you're living in denial. Absolute denial. You're, you're, you are, and, okay, that's enough, I'm not even gonna talk about that. Okay? That's it. Okay. Um, if you wanna talk about substance abuse, and you really care about the kids, and all these pastors who are talking about how much they care about the kids, okay? Well then, why aren't we talking about flaming hot Cheetos? Why aren't we talking about soda? Why aren't we talking about high fructose corn syrup in our kids' products? Why aren't we talking about things that are affecting the most important people in our lives, our grandparents, like diabetes, heart disease, hypertension? When you go to the doctors, my father's a doctor, by the way, and everybody, all doctor, at least as far as, like I know, as far as, you know, his circle of doctors, think that it is absolutely ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, to put any type of ban on marijuana? If you're gonna allow all these other harmful chemicals, if you're gonna allow Roundup to be sold, a cancerous thing that's used in the public at our schools?
Thank you.
And you wanna make a big deal about access to marijuana, and you care about the kids.
Thank you. Bill McPike, Kim Castro, and Martha Colstad.
Bill McPike, attorney at law. And, uh, anyway, I read in the paper that the Mayor Lee Brand and Chief Police had personal objections. But anyway, the, uh, personal objections to the state legal marijuana activities, uh, should, should not interfere with the implementation of the law. The spirit of democracy should never be, never yield to, uh, personal political opinions or objections. And then I read, I read in the Word Notes where it said that, uh, it's a federal crime under the CSA. The penalty is the crime. Under the CSA, it would be a violation of regulation, uh, of the drug. And Paul Capriolio knows well that, uh, the state courts don't enforce federal law, and so that's a red herring. And, uh, Mr. Capriolio was in court when I argued to get my clients half-pound of hashish and marijuana back, and the judge granted that order. So anyway, you know, the ordinance claims marijuana is a crime under U.S. laws, this is false. It's a drug regulated for health and safety reasons by the United States and also by our state laws. The penalty is a criminal penalty, and it was declared to have no accepted medical use in the United States to be a Schedule I drug with heroin. Okay? In reality, we have 29 states that have, are part of the United States that recognize medical use. We have doctors in those states that recognize it, medical boards that are not penalizing the doctors. So it's a mistake to have it in the Controlled Substances Act. And not, not only that, um, Congress, Congress defended enforcement in the states that have regulations. So I, I think to ban it, you know, it's a God-given plant. You know, if you're a Christian and you believe in the Bible, don't be a hypocrite, go home, get on your knees, read Genesis.
Thank you.
Uh, 1, 11, and 12. God gave us the plant, and he saw that it was good.
Thank you for your comments. We have Kim Castro, Martha Colstad, Fred Vanderhoof. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Okay, yes, my name is Kimberly Castro. I live at 4491 East Terrace Avenue in the great city of Fresno, and I just wanna quick start off with the gentleman in the green who is talking about the, he sounds like he's very passionate about going after Cheetos and high fructose corn syrup. I wanna encourage you to go champion that, 'cause that's passionate to you and we'll do what we are passionate about. So I say you go with going after those dangerous things. So, good afternoon, council president and city council members. I just wanna ask you all to please vote yes on the ban to recreational marijuana dispensaries. As I've been thinking about it more and more, this really isn't a, a party affiliation issue. It's not a Republican issue, it's not a Democrat issue, it's not a Libertarian issue. To me, this is an issue of do I care? Do you all care that, about individuals? Do you care about children? Do you care about families, neighborhoods? Do you care about all of this that you wish to improve, enrich, and protect? So to me, this is a do you care issue. By voting yes, you're gonna send a message to the citizens that no amount of tax dollars is worth, is worth our neighborhoods and our families and our schools, our parents. The black market in Colorado, take, go study the facts, all those hard drugs all took a boost. Take a look at the stats. So again, please vote yes on the ban to recreational marijuana dispensaries, and no to policies that impede and oppress our families and our cities that you all here are elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Colstad, Fred Vanderhoof, and we have Sister Kate.
Thank you.
Welcome, please give us your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Good afternoon, I'm Martha Colstad, 1447 West San Ramon in Fresno. I want to start out by saying that I worked on the campaign against Proposition 64, and I wanna tell you that standing on the street corners with our signs peacefully, you can't imagine how we were subjected to all kinds of crude, rude, you know, forms of intimidation, people hanging out the windows, instead of just, you know, I think we all have a right to say what we think, you know, peacefully. We were there doing that, and I mean, people were out the window, you know, with gestures and screaming obscenities and everything else. So I just wanna let you know that I think that was uncalled for. So I hope that the group here will be, you know, not that kind of a situation. Um, I'm asking for a yes on ban recreational dispensaries. I think the facts actually are what we need to consider. If you do look, and I'm sure that those of you up here have looked at other cities, Colorado, back east and so on, to see what the impact actually has been on the cities who have enacted this. It sounds like a good idea, the revenue sounds wonderful, however, law enforcement, hospitals, children, schools, parents who have left their brownies at home and the kids have taken them to school, where whole classrooms have had to go to the hospital. Okay? I don't think there's anybody in here who uses marijuana socially or anything would have a hard time getting it, right now, in the future, or whatever. People are gonna get it, it's not, I mean, everybody knows, okay? It's, it's not that big a deal. But if you have law enforcement and doctors and professionals, professionals and ministers who are telling you the impact that they see day in and day out because of drugs, realizing that marijuana, yes, can be a gateway drug, some people, maybe not, but a lot of people it is. The professionals are telling you the dangers of this, you all have a responsibility to all the citizens in our city, and I urge you a big yes on not having these recreational dispensaries allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Fred Vanderhoof, and then Sister Kate, and then Michael Green. Fred for the, and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Fred Vanderhoof, 6420 East Townsend. One thing I haven't heard today is, uh, the, the view from a parent. Uh, my wife is here today with me, and, uh, we have a, uh, adult child who, two years ago, we found out was, uh, smoking pot, and very involved in the whole, uh, Prop 64 situation also. And, uh, I won't go into details, but it was a, a real concern to us as parents, and a lot of heartache, a lot of prayer. Two weeks ago, we found out that this, this, um, member of our family decided against smoking marijuana. Uh, and that was a big decision, and this member thought, he looked at everything, and, and, uh, how it would affect family members, his family members, himself, his wife, and he decided against it. So that was something really, really good for us to, to hear that. We were relieved. Second thing, um, I'm a school teacher, a public school teacher at a school in North Fresno, and, uh, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, three, uh, third graders who were caught doing pot. That's seven, eight-year-old students. And I, I feel like if, if we, we're at the point in this city where we could open Pandora's box for our kids if, if we don't make the right decision on this. So I'm in favor of a, a yes on the ban. This will affect kids, this will affect students, as we heard from other people, and, uh, I think it's so important as a teacher to help us by, um, uh, doing a yes of it on the ban. The other one is law enforcement, and, uh, I heard on the radio today, uh, one of our top law enforcement officials from Fresno, uh, say that, that clearly there will be cartels involved in this. And so I, I think that's important also. We got another family member who's considering law enforcement, and I think that this is, is something to consider. Uh, we have law enforcement officials who are saying clearly that, uh, this will, uh, create, um, more crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Sister Kate, Michael Green, Steven Zukovich. Hi, please give us your name and address for the record, then you'll have two minutes.
I'm Sister Kate, 3144 G Street in Merced. That's not a real address, that's a rent address, 'cause we grow weed. Um, I don't, I was going to, um, uh, rebut a lot of things, I'm very offended by people drawing lines. You have crime, or is cannabis legalization gonna bring crime? Is really giving dispensaries gonna make our 13-year-olds smoke weed, or are they already smoking weed? I hear this argument in the valley all the time, and I kinda go, come on, what is it? If they're getting it now, if these ministers have 13-year-olds now getting weed under your ban, it's not working. So let me just say what we're doing, and why. We have 10 women that we've taken in the last 18 months who are chronically unemployable, given them full-time jobs, and they are paying taxes. We had our second batch of 10. The next 10 could've been in Fresno, but we have to say no. Fresno's like the Middle East. They ban all cannabis. We ship 60 packages a day out of the Central Valley. We make non-psychoactive cannabis that will not get anyone high. 20% of our packages go international. They go to the Middle East, they go to Russia, they go to Germany. For two years, we've gotten regular weekly testimonials from people on pain relief, now we're getting the cancer cure reports. We just got our first several reports on people who for 90 days took our product and made their tumor shrink, or made their cancer go away. We have doctors from around the world that are flying into your airport. We have everybody flying into Fresno, we pick them up here. We've had two sets of media a month for the last year on our farm because the world is discussing the miraculous healing power of cannabis. Now what we wanna do is have, grow our sisterhood around the world. We are talking, we have already launched in Canada, we are talking to Germany, we are talking to Ireland. Of course, at the beginning, I was like thinking our next sisterhood should be in Fresno, but Fresno's so hostile to the plant that no one that was working even with CBD would ever dream of coming here. But I would like to be here. Sorry, I said what I had to say. We use the post office and the banks, and we, and we test all our batches to make sure they're non-psycho.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Green, and then Steven Zukovich. Excuse me for mispronouncing your name, I know I have, and then I have Alonso Martinez. So you have two minutes, Mr. Green, give us your name and address for the record, and then you take it away.
Uh, my name is Michael Green with Fresno Cannabis Association. I have an address at 710 Van Ness for a business that is technically banned. Uh, for the past seven years, we've been trying to educate both the county and the city about medical cannabis and the fact that medical cannabis patients do medical cannabis and the fact that medical cannabis patients do need safe access, not just in terms of personal cultivation, but also through regulated dispensaries that have lab-tested medicines and, and a better overall experience for the user. That's been tough sledding. Prop 64 passed in November, so now we have acknowledgement finally that non-medical use exists. So now it's 21 and up. If you want to go to a bar and buy beer, that's one thing. If you want to go buy your pot at the pot store, 21 and up. So the current proposal is, oh, let's ban recreational, but we got to go back to the history of the city and say, you never got around to medical. You got a room full of patients who have been banned out, not just in terms of personal cultivation, but also in terms of their ability to access state-licensed dispensaries. We now have a landmark law, Prop 64, that is going to bring tax revenues, jobs, economic development to those communities that are willing to do it, but it's also going to cost communities that ban by robbing them of the ability to get state grant funds for law enforcement, by robbing them of local taxes, by robbing them of the ability to do what Prop 64 does, which is actually put tax money toward the things that these people are talking about. Youth dependency, health education, ways to improve enforcement against rogue grows. Prop 64 raised all these issues, and my question is whether anybody actually read that. I have a petition that we put on MoveOn. I know online petitions are not much, but we did submit it. We had over 460 Fresno residents sign it, we're over 500 at this point. And we just basically asked, before you double ban, before you double down on banning adult-use dispensaries, come back to the patients and say, what about us? In terms of the resolution, I don't know if the President's is going to go through or Mr. Brettafeld's, but you can actually split the baby. You could say, hey, bring us back a ban to look at, bring us back some regulations to look at. Do your due diligence. Please take care of the patients in this audience. I don't care if I'm a 21 and up patient, non-patient with my driver's license, or if you're going to honor finally the state medical marijuana card, but do something for patients finally in the city of Fresno.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Hi, Stephen, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, Stephen Ziskowicz, 4083 North Peach Avenue, District 4.
Take it away.
Let's see. This, this whole thing about recreational and medical, I mean, we, we know it's basically the same in the end, you know? I mean, I came from Wisconsin where it was just illegal, that's, that's all it was. You just had to buy it illegally, grow it illegally, you feel like a criminal, like they're going to come after you, so you moved to California. And you get the medical thing, you go to the doctor, then you form the collective with the state, and you pay the sales tax to the state. And it, it really doesn't matter because you, you've got these adults who won't even get the recommendation, and they, especially with the delivery places, they beg them like, come on, man, come on, I don't have my rec, but just sell it to me because it's legal for adults. So it's essentially the same, it's just a different tax thing. We've got these parking lot medical deals and we're trying to get away from this. We, we don't want to feel not safe, you know? We're importing the medicine from up north where, where people get away with it or even just say, yes, I'm doing it. You know, we're giving our money to them and somehow growing the almonds down here and gaining enough money to buy something more expensive when really we should be growing as much as we can down here. We should be growing hemp, you know, whatever makes sense, you know? Otherwise you end up with these little houses, one guy watching it, it's completely filled up with cannabis. We don't want that, we want it within reason. If you've got the space, you should grow hemp or cannabis. Because CBD is 50-state legal, you know? We generally want to know, are the cops going to come in at gunpoint on us? My family wonders that. They say, take, take prescription drugs because then that won't happen. And I said, I've taken them, I don't want to take them, I want to take cannabis. And we could fix the stray dog problem from the last time. We'd get just, without an extra tax, just, just normal sales tax, just extra revenue to, to do that.
Thank you for your comments. Our speaker is Alonso Martinez. Dallas Blanchard, Richard Davis, and that's the last card.
Hello, my name's Marcus Martinez, this is my godfather.
Alonso Martinez.
He's a Vietnam veteran. We live at 1021 North Adeline in Tower District. I've been taking care of my uncle for about five, six years from coming back from college in Colorado. He's been on a vast amount of pharmaceutical drugs. About a year ago, in about two days a year ago, if you've seen my godfather, he'd be drooling all over the place and he wouldn't even know who you were. Because of marijuana, a bunch of his pharmaceutical drugs have been dropped. He, his functioning, he's functioning very well now. I have him break the barriers, I have him in Valley Adult Daycare. If he was still on pharmaceuticals, he probably wouldn't even be in those programs. If this is all about the kids, I wish you guys know that DARE actually de-categorized cannabis from their gateway, as a gateway drug. And if you do your research in Colorado, they actually did research on crime as it went down when marijuana was legalized. Also, that's a lot to say. My uncle takes these tinctures and they take away a lot of his night terrors. You know, he was drafted, forced to go to Vietnam. You know, I understand the recreational use of this, but medical-wise, I mean, recreation and medical use is the same. We all come from the ghetto, the hood, and we experienced, we're traumatized by the crime and stuff we see. Marijuana helps out with that PTSD. PTSD is not just war, you know? It's out there in the streets, you get PTSD from everything. And I see now, my uncle, I have, they try to take conservatorship away from him, they try to take him away from me and the house and everything. And I fought, I had power of attorney, I had healthcare, direct care, healthcare directive, I fought. And the reason why they took me to court is because they said I didn't want to give him his medication. And what you guys are doing right now is you're taking his medication away from him. And so you guys should go to court. And you guys should go through the hassle I had to go through to get him back because they said he was, there's marijuana in the system, you didn't want to give him his medication. I just wanted the right medication for him. And marijuana is the right medication. And it doesn't matter if it's recreational or medical, it's all the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Dallas Blanchard, followed by Richard Davis.
Give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes. Yes, Dallas Blanchard, 933 F Street in Chinatown. I'm a member of the Central Valley Opioid Safety Coalition. It's a coalition to help slow the spread or the extent of overdose deaths related to opioids. And it's a coalition made up of Health Department officials and physicians from Merced down to Tulare. And because of my membership in that, I've heard of numerous patients who have stepped down off of prescription pain medications and opioids to marijuana. And I'd also like to remind everyone that within all of your districts, marijuana got more votes than all of you did, except for Brettafeld. Thank you.
Gary beats pot, all right. All right, Richard Davis, Richard Smith, Eric Zamora, please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Richard Davis. I live at 2416 North Adeline. I'm here today, basically, I'm not here to talk about medical marijuana. We have plenty of people here for that. We have a bunch of people talking about their moral issues with marijuana, we've got plenty of people for that. I heard from one father here, thank you for coming and sharing, I'm also a father, that's why I'm here. I was charged with a felony for 1.5 grams of concentrate. That got reduced to a misdemeanor thanks to Prop 47. I worked vigorously on Prop 64 to have that expunged from my record. I don't want to see other fathers fall into situations where they're rejected from a job, like I was rejected from Amazon for my conviction, for my marijuana possession. Now, I had medical marijuana, I, I was having it under Prop 215, but my marijuana license had expired by one month. And this is a type of thing that we need to prevent. We need to help fathers get back to work. We need to help people get things expunged from their records that are simple, harmless things like marijuana. I'm not talking about heroin, I'm not talking about cocaine, but I was treated like I was a heroin addict. I was treated like I was a cocaine addict. And today, we stand here and you're basically going to reinforce those, your moral or however you view it, on me and prevent me from expunging my record and telling me that I can't be a normal citizen because I was caught with one bowl of marijuana in my pocket and charged with a felony. I find that unacceptable in a community where we, like, I don't even know where I'm going with this. But I mean, like, obviously you can see the impact that that's had on my life and I'm not, and I don't stand alone. There's a lot of people who have been majorly impacted, especially in the ghettos. Like, these people are talking about trying to improve the ghettos. A lot of this money that's coming from Prop 64 is directly going into the police department, is directly going into enforcing the regulation of marijuana. Not this, this money's not going into building fancy structures, it's going into regulation, and that's what we need. So I, I'm standing with Oliver and I want you guys to simply not completely deregulate or completely just relook at the issue and come back with something that can work for the citizens.
Thank you. Richard Smith, followed by Eric Zamora, Dante Farinelli, please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
My name is Richard Smith, 5274 North Sequoia Drive, Fresno. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I'm 66 years old, I was born and raised in Fresno. This is my home and I love it. There's just so many good things about this city. I support our chief, Adire, and Sheriff Mims, and would like to say that I have several health conditions, a heart attack, sleep apnea, arthritis, and post-traumatic stress syndrome. I started using CBD oil a year ago and it let me sleep, it let me wear my CPAP mask, it relieved the inflammation in my body, which let me sleep. If I don't wear my mask, I'm going to die. The recreational marijuana, I'm not here to talk about that, but there are a lot of medicinal users. I smoked pot when I was a kid in the 60s, I'm a child of the 60s, so I knew what that's like. When I did my research and found out that there are products out there that don't get you high, I signed up. I said, well, I'll try it. So far, I got off Ambien, Trimidol, and Flexeril. I don't take those anymore because a few droppers before I go to bed helps me to sleep and, and, and work. I have a lot of responsibilities in my job and I have to be clear in, in what I do. I would urge the council to vote no, and if you can't do that, would ask you to postpone this until further investigation on your part. I would say that for every person in here, there's probably 100 or 500 people out there, baby boomers like myself that are in physical pain and are discovering that here's something that they can take, low cost, and, and feel better, have a better quality of life. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have Eric Zamora, Dante Farinelli, Christina Soto. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
My name's Eric Zamora, 1823 East Clayton Avenue. Just to give you a little background on, on me, you're communicating with your community and who you're representing. I come from an immigrant family, first generation. I honestly first tried marijuana at age 16 and it wasn't because of the plant, it was because of the stresses that came in my life from my immediate family, from income, from clothes, the food on the table. So with a lot of the pastors were saying, I, I kind of, talking about the youth, it's, it's not the plant, not marijuana, that makes the kids want to try it and, and it's, it's stress, it's trauma. Dr. Drew came to Fresno City and I had the opportunity to talk to him and I asked him a little about it. And, and the one thing he said that stuck with me was addiction, it's not the drug. Most patients he sees addiction, it's not the drug, it's the trauma that they're running away from. It's the stress that they're running away from, from their life. So that's what I want to say. It's, it's not the, it's not the plant, it's trauma. Also, after high school, I joined the Marine Corps at age 18. From there, I had a tour in Afghanistan and suffered from depression, anxiety, and a lot of other cool things and bad things that come with serving in the Marine Corps. And I've educated myself, I've done my research, I've gone to doctors, gone to therapists, and the best option for me is medical marijuana. Not only is it the best option for me, it's the best option for my mother who has MS, it's incurable. She barely has enough strength to cook me and my five younger siblings food every day and to make sure that she's doing what she can to be the best mother she can. But at the end of the day, when she, when her, she can't communicate with her muscles and she is having spasms and I am there thanking her for the food she has given me and my family, for her, what relaxes her and what makes her relax and wake up the next day to be there for her. Kids is the marijuana that has taken out just a little bit of that stress. Go to sleep, wake up, enjoy the next day with her family.
Thank you, thank you. Dante Farinelli, Christina Soto, Amanda Foster, please give us your name and address for the record, you all also have two minutes.
All right, my name's Dante Farinelli, I live at 2066 West Fremont Avenue. I think the most important thing we need to first acknowledge in regards to any debate to do with this substance or any other is that it's a very nuanced issue. It's not black and white, there's areas of gray, there's good and bad to come with it. But I think that legalizing it and allowing individuals to make that choice is the end-all be-all for this. It's not up to any governing body as a whole to put a blanket ban or a blanket acceptance on anything either way. I would argue that legalization gives the choice to the community. It allows more openness and more transparency. It allows for stifling the black market trade. And I guess from there, I just want to go into an anecdote because that's what a lot of this operates on. So personally, I've been smoking marijuana since I was the age of 15. I'm 22 years old now, I am a student full-time at Fresno State. I smoke weed every day. It doesn't impair my judgment, it doesn't impair my ability to function as a student. I, not to pat myself on the back, I set the curve in one of the hardest classes at Fresno State while smoking weed every day, going to class high, going to study sessions high. It works for some people, it doesn't work for just as many people. But in legalizing, we give people that choice. And by legalizing, we also create positive tax revenue. And with that, we're able to create more educational programs. We're able to educate our kids on the basis of, you know, the nuances of the situation. Instead of programs like DARE, which are totally just about fear-mongering and, you know, you tell a kid, hey, don't do this because I said not to do this because it's a bad thing, what's the first thing they're going to do? They're going to go out and be like, yeah, BS, I'm going to try that for myself and figure it out. But if we treat people like they actually have the capacity to make these decisions instead of just saying, no, this is wrong and this is bad, then maybe we'll actually make some progress in the positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Christina Soto, Amanda Foster, and Mallory Medina, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
My name is Christina Soto and my address is 4175 East Illinois in Fresno, 93702, not too far from Mr. Elias Church here. So my father is a medical marijuana user and, sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I had some notes here and I can't find them.
Take your time, don't be.
Okay. So my dad suffers from rheumatoid arthritis and he uses medical marijuana to treat his arthritis as an alternative to taking opiates like Tramadol, which are shown to be extremely harmful and are at a high risk for abuse. As we speak, there is legislation being introduced in Congress with bipartisan support to end federal marijuana prohibition. And I feel like the city should take this opportunity to lead and be at the forefront of showing what proper regulate, excuse me, regulation can look like. Marijuana has been proven time and again to be less dangerous than alcohol and not to mention it's a huge strain on the judicial system, on our police force and their resources, and are already overcrowded jails. I just want to say that I'm, I'm really disappointed that there's so many pastors here that are basically speaking for the criminalization of the people in their community because people are, are going to use it no matter what. And I think what our job here, hopefully, as a city, is to educate each other. I've had to talk with my children, because my father lives with us, about what marijuana is and what the dangers are and what my father specifically uses it for. And I think that's a... that's something that's necessary. If we say no on the ban, that can lead to revenue, excuse me, that can be put back into educating and creating programs to help deal with a lot of the issues that we're having with meth, and opiates, and other things that are ravaging our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, getting close to the end here, two more cards for Amanda Foster and Mallory Medina, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Amanda Foster, I live at 2510 East Kelso Avenue. Alright, I am not a user, but I am a teacher. I live in Fresno, and I work in Madera. As far as I know, the laws are similar. Teenagers are getting caught with weed, every day, they're in my class, they come to school high, every day, they're there. There's, it's banned, but they're there, they're getting high anyway. I agree with those who have spoken before me, the ban does not work. If we want to work for our kids, let's work for them. Drug use in teenagers is a concern, it's a daily concern for me. Use of marijuana under 20 has been linked to loss of gray matter, and that's why it's illegal for people who are under 20, or 21 rather. So let's educate our students, encourage them to make healthy choices, and advocate for themselves. Students that do use marijuana at that age normally need counseling. They have home lives that are unimaginable to some of us. As a teacher, I get to act as a therapist a lot of the time, and the stuff these kids come to me with is absolutely heartbreaking. Marijuana is readily available in their household, and that speaks to what is going on in their homes. Banning it doesn't change that, it doesn't make it better or easier for these kids. We can talk about the kids all day, but I don't know that the ban is helping any of them. As far as I can tell, it's really, really not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mallory, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, you'll also have two minutes.
My name is Mallory Medina, 5862 West Milbury Avenue, Fresno, California. So, tried to avoid talking to you guys as much as possible, I sat, I listened, and I really wanted to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, I wanted to listen to both sides, just as you all are doing today. What we're looking for right now is not tolerance, we're looking for acceptance, we're looking for people to understand that this is coming towards us. We can sit here and we can shy away from this industry, and we can say, "You know what, no, this is not for our people," and that's fine, it's fine, we have the right to make that choice. But what we really need to focus on is our future. Fresno has continuously pushed back these sort of instances and these sort of events to avoid making good decisions. And I understand, they take a while. I sat with Van S. Otto 15 years in these same chambers, you guys remember, we had fun with that, I know you did. And I was that little kid, and now we're going back for my industry. So let's go. But all I gotta say is really that, what we're looking to do is combat the already bad stigma that we have in this industry, and we're alright with it. We can say, "You know what, children are gonna be harmed," but what we need to do is we need to educate our children. We need to educate our individuals that use this product just as much as any other type of substance. And I say substance as in, that could also be water, or like the man pointed out, hot Cheetos. It could be anything. But what we need, especially right now, is just the understanding that we can move forward as a city. We can move forward, and we can allow something with regulations, and as Mr. Olivier said, with the CUP, which I've used many times, conditional use permit, we're regulating this. So if we choose to regulate this, what we're allowing to do is we're allowing the power back to us, not only just the people, to our enforcement, to our city representatives. We're allowing ourselves to finally have the freedom to actually regulate this industry, and by not choosing to do that, we're giving up our freedom. So please, just take a moment to understand that, and I definitely appreciate you guys all being here today.
Thank you, Mallory. I remember Van S. Otto and that debate very well. I think it was Tom Boyajian's time, or he, right after Tom Blong was here and he did that one. Okay, the last card I have is for George Boyajian, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll also have two minutes.
Good afternoon, George Boyajian, address is 1445 North Maple here in Fresno. I was against the ban originally, and I'm full supporter of what, what you proposed, Clint, and I also wanna participate in whatever city, creating regulations, whatever you guys got going on. So my statement is, the current prohibition of medical marijuana has not only been ineffective, but in short, cruel to the, the tens of thousands of patients here. We have, seems like we talk about apples and oranges, we have patients that come up here, talk about the medical uses that they need, and then we have some community leaders that come up, talk about the children. I'm sure there's a way to keep marijuana away from the tens of children while also giving access to medical patients, we don't have to outright ban everything. So people are gonna get up and they'll talk about the, the rising crime in Denver, Colorado, or whatever, but the research has shown that there is no correlation between rising crime rates in Denver and marijuana, it has nothing to do with each other. All the research since 2012 shows that crime, crime rates in Denver are, any given year, make up less than 1% of all offenses in the federal uniform crime report, less than half percent of those offenses reported are from marijuana. It's, it is, it seems like everybody just barely got here, we don't know what's going on, you know, some patients over here are, are fighting for their rights, and other people are talking about, "We gotta keep it away, because they wanna think of the children." I'm a parent myself, no, I don't want my kids using marijuana, but my three-year-old daughter came up to me with a, with a bottle of Pepsi, I had her older brother put a little masking tape on it, and he knows how to write, so they wrote "Duff" on it, and she came up to me talking, telling me about her daddy, "Look, I'm drinking beer." And what, what Duff beer, what, what cartoon is that from? And my kids have been watching The Simpsons since they were two years old, so you wanna talk about gateway drugs, maybe we should eliminate cartoons, huh?
Thank you, George. Alright, we, that was our last card, so typically what we do is we invite folks to come forward, if you haven't filled out a card yet, and you haven't, okay, please come forward, and give us your, turn in your card, give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes, and then after this speaker, we'll go ahead and call again for anybody else who, who hasn't spoken, who hasn't filled out a card, and then we'll bring it back up to council, and we'll, we'll get a vote for you.
Hello, my name is John Wilson, I'd just like to start, "In God We Trust." God put this plant here for a reason. It's non-toxic, it helps people, I've seen it help many people. I know what it's like to be in rough neighborhoods, I have families that live in rough neighborhoods. I also know what it's like to be in nice neighborhoods, I have my other side of the family that's very well off. Let me tell you, these bad neighborhoods have a meth epidemic, have a heroin epidemic, have gun problems, gang violence, all of the above. For you guys to waste your time going after cannabis that's non-toxic and helps so many people, I don't, I don't know what to say to you guys, I don't know how you guys could do this. You guys are making it so drug, so people, okay, I lost it, but, I feel bad for these pastors that believe that cannabis is gonna hurt the community, 'cause in all truth, cannabis is gonna help the community. Alcohol hurts the community, tobacco hurts the community, all these sugars in our food hurts the community, and we're not regulating that. We're letting it, we're letting it available flow to our community. With that being said, I hope you guys think about regulating it properly and not putting it to the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, great comment. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
I'm Pastor Jimmy Foot, my address is 2696 East Shea in Fresno. And first of all, I wanna say, I came here as an observer, certainly with a perspective to ban the use of marijuana or the dispensaries here. It seems like a couple of things, we have a roomful of experts, people who deal with the medicinal use of marijuana, and I heard some things, thank you, that I hadn't heard before. I have members of my congregation who use marijuana medicinally, and they're quite passionate about it. We also have experts in law, and law enforcement, and we have experts like myself as pastors, and we deal with people who've been using marijuana all their lives, and we see what happens in their lives. I wanna remind the council here that you are experts as well, and you are charged with protecting our community, and taking in the advice of the professionals that are here in our city. I really believe that there is a solution for those who need to use medicinal marijuana, for them to receive what they need. But we're talking about pot dispensaries in my neighborhood or the neighborhood of my church, and as an expert on my neighborhood, and people who are in many cases underserved educationally and economically, they do not have, they do not need another distraction in their lives. They do not need access to a drug that is holding many of them back, and that we all see from the evidence has an effect on people that short-circuits their lives. So I just wanna encourage you to take in the advice of those who are the professionals, including those who use it medicinally, and perhaps we can find a solution. As far as recreational use, and I, I certainly wanna respect council here, but remember, this is about pot dispensaries, is it not?
Thank you. No introduction needed, hello.
Fresno Police Chief Jerry Dyer. You know, I wanna thank everybody for coming out today, because there's no shortage of opinions here, and people are passionate about their position, and I'm passionate about my position based on my 38 years of experience in law enforcement, and the, what I've seen over that 38 years. And so the debate here today is not whether, or not, whether or not marijuana is legal or illegal, that's been decided by the voters of California, and, but the, the debate today is whether or not the city of Fresno should increase the access and availability of marijuana within our community. You know, as you look across Fresno County, every city, with, with the exception of Kalinga, has already voted to ban accessibility to marijuana within their jurisdictions, with the exception, I believe, of Parler, who is undecided at this point. But what I have seen over the years is that when you increase the accessibility and availability, you do increase usage amongst youth. We've seen that with methamphetamine, Meth Labs started right here in the valley, and now we have an incredible amount of individuals that are addicted to meth. How do they support their drug habit? By stealing, and we know that to be true. What we also know is that there's an incredible addictive power to marijuana, the marijuana that we saw in the 60s and 70s is not the marijuana that we're seeing today. The marijuanas in the 60s and 70s were 15 to 20% THC content, today that THC content is 60 to 70%, and with edibles, it's 90 to 95%, which is why you're seeing so much damage to, to many of our youth today that are using marijuana. And so, you know, I've heard a lot of people come up and talk about, "Does marijuana drive crime, or not drive crime, is dispensaries?" I, I think that's subject to debate. What we do know is that methamphetamine drives crime rates, and we do know that marijuana dispensaries have an increased number of crimes in and around those jurisdictions, as well as those individuals that come to and from. We have a recent example, September 17th, 2016, right here in our city, we had an individual who was running an illegal dispensary. That illegal dispensary, he would not allow walk-up customers, why? Because of the attempted robberies that had occurred. So he had a delivery service. He delivered, and there was a attempted robbery of him and a murder. And so let me just close with this.
Folks, you know what, excuse me, Chief Dyer, folks, I'm going to consider Chief Dyer's remarks as staff time, as part of the staff presentation, so I'm going to, to allow Chief Dyer to finish up his comments today, 'cause he is a, a part of city staff and, and employee here, so please continue.
Thank you, Council President. Last thing I wanna say is, I have a chief's advisory board that is very diverse, made up of people from all over this community. We've had this discussion twice, 100% of those individuals support a ban of marijuana in our city from dispensaries. And I also wanted to commend the pastors that have the courage and the boldness to come here and speak for what they believe in. I think it's unfair for people to stand up here and to criticize men of the cloth, and I support what they had said earlier today, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Juve, and I live 1453 North Wilson, I'm a proud resident of the Tar District, whoop whoop. And I wanted to ask you today to please consider safe access for everyone. There's a lot of PTSD patients that aren't gonna go out and get their recommendations, and they're gonna count on the recreational dispensaries, and I've encountered a lot of those people since I started doing advocating for marijuana. I also wanna say that when I went to Oregon and experienced what it was like for a recreational patient to walk into a dispensary, it was very limited access. You walk in, you have to show your driver's license, you have to go to a certain area, you are not allowed to go to the same area as the medical patients are, you are limited as what you're able to get on, as far as the amount of marijuana you're able to buy at a time. You're also regulated on how much the edible would be concentrated, how strong it was gonna be, and you had access to topicals, because topicals don't make, give you that head high, you know, it doesn't change your mind. So there are ways for you guys to do this really well, this is your chance, this is a revenue. We just got, you know, our report card is how poorly educated our children are. Could we use this money to do that, to help our kids get better educations? Yes, we could, and you guys have the chance to do that. This is the agricultural basket of the world, we can grow the best here too. You know, this is an unlimited resource for us in tax revenue, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Good evening, Council. I don't need the mic, okay, my voice can be heard. My name is Frank Warner, I live 5326 North Valentine Avenue, Fresno. Alright, let's just, let's just out of here, I'm a combat veteran, I deal with PTSD, I deal with depression, I deal with multiple personality, you name it, I, I deal with it. I've been on three tours to Iraq, and I'm not even 30. 28 years old, I signed my life away at 17 years old to go serve this country, alright, just for them to kick me on all these different medications, Risperol, Effexor, Vicodins for Pain, "Let's put you on this one, oh, that's not working, we're gonna switch you over to this one." Well, let me tell you, I use cannabis. I use it every day, as much as I can. Instead of using these medications that children can access, just as easy as adults, because, yeah, they put kids on these pills, would you, or have your child, be put on a medication that's gonna physically alter your brain? Would you, would you allow that? Have you looked into any of the information that pharma is bringing down? Now, I'm not saying that big pharmacy is, is the, is the big enemy, I'm, there are people out there that need pharmaceuticals, but I'm saying that there are also people out here that we need cannabis. If it wasn't for cannabis, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'd probably be dead. I've told my therapist that many times in the VA, there's many nights where I'll stay up crying all night. My, my, my dad is, is just, "You smoke cannabis, you're done." My ex, she left me with my kid, "If you smoke cannabis." But are we really that wrong? For all these volunteers and all these, all these strong people out here, the face of the cannabis community, these are your growers, these are your, your cooks, your chefs, your farmers, your everyday face, that is your cannabis community, and those are the people of your city. It's time to start respecting these people, honestly. Are, are you going to just let us wither away? Well, whether you do or not, the cannabis community, we're not gonna give up, and we will not back down. Regardless of a ban, regardless of a law, we're not gonna stop, in fact, we'll only grow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, we're out of cards, there are no longer folks lined up, so is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this topic? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and return it to city council. Just an item of housekeeping, we, we have some folks who, who have to use the restroom, and we have some folks who have to take care of a couple items, so what I'm thinking is that, let's take my motion and vote on that, and then take a 10-minute break, so everyone can stand up, stretch their legs, go to the bathroom, and then we'll come back and, and, depending on how my motion goes.
Depending, yeah.
So, since it's back here, I just wanted to kinda wrap up with, with, with my motion here very briefly, and then, and then we- And then, and then we can, we can go ahead and vote, and we'll, we'll do this quickly. Yeah, he's going to go next. I'm going to kind of say the last thing.
Let me just be clear, Council Presidents, what you're suggesting is we vote on your motion.
Yeah.
If it passes, then we're done.
We're done.
If it doesn't pass...
We'll come back after a brief.
...we'll take a 10-minute to address this issue further.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I guess just kind of wrap up. I'm, I'm going to make a last-ditch attempt for any undecided council colleagues who still don't know how they're going to vote. You know, I'm a student of history, and even though I voted against the Historical Association today, I'm a, a student of history. I love to read history. I love to, to understand the things that happened in the past. And I, I've, I've written a book about something that happened in the 1920s. And as part of my research, I, I tried to, to understand the culture of the 1920s as much as I could. By the end of the Volstead Act, by the time that the Volstead Act had run its course, that's alcohol prohibition, you would see evangelical Christian mothers and groups of mothers marching in large, large numbers, marching in the name of Jesus against prohibition because their sons died from drinking poisoned liquor, black market liquor, because their sons were caught in, their daughters were caught in gang crossfires. And so what we had in the end of the 1920s was an impassioned plea from the evangelical Christian community. "Please, Mr. Roosevelt, please, Mr. Hoover, end this prohibition." Franklin D. Roosevelt won that campaign, promising to repeal alcohol prohibition, promising to address the scourge of criminal gangs, to put people like Al Capone and other killers out of work. That's how the Roosevelt administration dealt with it, and they repealed the prohibition of alcohol, much to the joy of the, the groups of evangelical Christian mothers who bravely stood up against prohibition of alcohol that was tearing our country apart. And I think that we're kind of in the same type of place today where people are dying in, in gang crossfires, people are, are really suffering in our communities. And I think that what we're looking at is very similar to prohibition, except this time we didn't amend the Constitution to do it.
Can I make a point of order, President?
Yes.
You're speaking on behalf of your motion, and then we're supposed to vote on it with nobody else addressing this, so...
No, that's fine. I, I will wrap up in less than 90 seconds. Thank you.
Well, I need a point of clarification. Anyone can speak on, on this motion, council member.
It sounded like you were...
That's right. Oh, no, 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 everybody can speak.
Anybody, anybody can speak.
Let me, let me power through this. I know people want to get to vote. Let me, let me just finish. So I think that, I think that prohibition only lends to the creation of a black market. And I think that that's what we're seeing in our, in our society today, is a very robust black market that's hurting families and hurting neighborhoods in my district. The black market here in the city of Fresno, we have dispensaries that are open. We have numerous delivery services that you can get marijuana, just like a pizza, delivered to your home in the city of Fresno. And, and this is, this is operating illegally here in our community. I do believe, agree with many of you here today, that this is a moral issue. I believe it's immoral to give drug cartels power over our families and our neighborhoods and our streets. My final point before we go to members Brandal, Baines, and Bretafeld is that there is something that is tearing apart the, the streets of District 7 and Cedar and Belmont and my community where I live and other places, and that's the scourge of alcohol and alcohol abuse. I've been told that the city cannot and should not use money made from the taxation of cannabis because it's dirty money, it's evil money, and, and we simply can't use it. But I'll tell you what, governments love to suck up alcohol taxes. We love to suck up tobacco taxes, and you bet we love to spend that money. So with that, let me just submit myself to you and my motion to you. If you have friendly amendments, or you want to, you want to massage it or twist it, but I believe that, that the motion to, to find a solution and go forward as a community is just, and I believe it is moral, and I believe that as a council and as an administration, it should be at least given the chance. And so with that, we'll turn it over to Member Brandal.
All right, thank you, Council President. I want to talk about a few of the things that I've heard today. And this is probably about the fourth or fifth time since I've been a council member that we've discussed marijuana from one angle or another. And usually it's been about either medicinal purposes or, or retail outlets. So until the passage of Prop 64, we haven't really talked about recreational retail. So I've got to clarify a few things so that everybody really knows what we're discussing today. One thing is that I'm not under the illusion, nor do we have the ability, we're not trying to stop marijuana. In the city of Fresno, people are going to be able to grow six plants in their home, right? So that's a given. People that want to smoke marijuana are still going to be able to smoke marijuana. It's not, this isn't trying to stop marijuana. That's already been decided. I do want to add that as a representative of Council District 2, Council District 2 in the city of Fresno was opposed to Prop 64. I want to share some thoughts for the people in the crowd today so they could probably, in my opinion, understand the way that this would really be rolled out in our city. But I'm equally speaking to my colleagues, okay? So here's what I think that would happen. And I don't know what, how District 6 voted, but if we just gave a carte blanche and allowed recreational retail outlets, storefronts, Steve's Marijuana Den, Esmeralda's Marijuana Emporium, right? If we just, if we allowed that to happen, we'd, we'd definitely see that come into the city of Fresno. Here's, here's exactly where I believe that those storefronts would go. They'd go probably from central to south Fresno, is my guess. You probably would have several of them in District 2, in my district. There would be several for sure that would be strong enough to operate in north Fresno. A lot of the folks in north Fresno probably wouldn't condone that, and you'd see those stores look to places where they're not going to be put up, a major fight for them going in those neighborhoods. I'm going to give you an example because I don't want you to think I'm talking bullcrap up here. We already have some predatory businesses. One of my good friends is Councilman Baines. He and I have been talking recently. He's got some code modifications coming up too long because in his district, he has a problem with single liquor sales, where somebody can come, go in on the way home from school and talk somebody into walking in and buying them a beer, whatever. Also, another predatory thing that we've seen happen in the city of Fresno is the loan sharking industry, where they can say, they can come in and say, "We'll give you $100 today, you're going to give us $300 back by the end of the year." We have some of those in north Fresno, but they don't fly as easy in north Fresno. But in south and central Fresno, they're all over the place, and my colleagues can testify to that. It's really hurt the neighborhoods because it's kind of a predatory system that preys on people who need immediate fulfillment of $100 or their, their check cash. They work for XYZ, they get their check on Friday, they get it cashed there, but the loan rate is 30% or something ridiculous. So it's, I'm going to say a few things about what I believe about marijuana. We're not going to stop marijuana. Pastors, we're not going to stop marijuana. The state of California has already made it clear, people are going to be able to smoke marijuana. What the state of California has allowed cities like the city of Fresno to do is regulate how that happens in their community, okay? So all we're deciding today is what is the best way going forward today. That was the one thing I want to say. I want my colleagues to know that that's what I think will happen. By the way, right now, we're also struggling with recycling centers. Recycling centers by the Save Mart, when they're by the Save Mart Center, they, what they do is promote people to go out in the neighborhood, go inside of people's trash cans, grab all the aluminum cans, take them to the recycle center, convert that to liquor, and then sit the rest of the day under the tree until they start it again the next day. That was good intention, let recycle centers go everywhere. The end result is crime. Chief Dyer just alluded to crime goes up when you allow this access. So recycle centers, the state of California thought, let's put recycle centers everywhere. Why? It's good to recycle. The end result is people use them as, as a crime opportunity. So currently, this council is in the throes of reducing the number of recycle centers. And then, one of the concepts is we put them in industrial zoned areas. Wouldn't surprise me if we ended up, if something, if this passed retail outlets, that they also went in industrial zoned areas. Where is industrial in the city of Fresno? Very little in north Fresno, okay? So I'm trying to be honest with you. You guys were honest with me, and I'm trying to be honest with you. This is some of the other stuff that we have to think about when we're doing this. I think it could be highly damaging to create a, a lot of access in certain parts of the city, and it's not going to happen in my neck of the woods. Now, then you get a lot of problems that arise with that. Okay, done with that. Second thing, for everybody who came here to talk about medicinal marijuana, okay? So I think that's a good chunk of the folks, including these well-spoken ex-vets and current vets, okay? For the people that came about medicinal marijuana, today we were not going to talk about medicinal marijuana. The, the ordinances that we were going to look at were about recreational marijuana, retail outlets, okay? So we weren't going to talk about medicinal. I, over the course of time, have come to believe, so this is where some of you are winning the argument. A guy like me was against it completely 100% in, in the past. But thanks to many of you who have spoken vehemently on behalf of medicinal marijuana, I am open to medicinal marijuana in the city of Fresno, probably the first time I've ever... Probably the first time I've ever said that from this dais after five or six times talking about marijuana. Let me say in advance that for me, one of the problems that I've had with medicinal marijuana, and you might see me vote against it again in the future, if I don't feel the regulations match what's trying to happen. Right now, I've had a very difficult time with it, in my opinion, with, without people being able to smoke recreational marijuana, the medicinal marijuana has become a racket, okay? That's my opinion, okay? I think medicinal marijuana has been a joke so that people that just want to smoke it recreationally can access a card and start smoking it under the medical banner. For those of you, like the young men and women, there was a young lady up here also today that really talked about needing medicinal marijuana for PTSD, I would love to find a way of helping you get your medicine without helping a doper that just wants to smoke and is using your system as a racket. If we can get past that hurdle, I could see myself someday supporting medicinal marijuana sales in the city of Fresno. I had to visit that because so many of you talked about medicinal marijuana, okay? However, that's really not what we were going to talk about today. We're going to talk about recreational marijuana. I know I'm going long, but I'm getting close to wrapping it up. We were going to talk about recreational marijuana. So people are still going to be able to smoke. Our conversation is where can it be sold? And that's why I am going to make a motion right now to return to the original argument that we were going to hear today, that I prepared for, that my colleagues prepared for, which was a two-part ban on recreational marijuana sales, okay? Again, for the lightweights in the crowd, you're still going to be able to smoke dope. You got, you can grow your six plants, you can smoke dope. Steve Brandal is not trying to stop you, okay? But when it comes to storefronts, when it comes to storefronts, I'm very hesitant to allow us to go forward. So I'm going to make a motion to go back to the original vote that we were here to take, which was about recreational marijuana.
Unfortunately, there's already a motion on the floor. And go ahead, City Attorney, we have to address the original, the motion, the original motion that I made.
There is a main motion pending on the floor. Another council member can make a motion to amend the main motion, either by changing the words or substituting another motion.
That's what I'm doing. I'm making a motion to amend Councilman Olivier's motion to go back to the original thing that I had prepared about and that we were going to vote on today. Now, that does not mean that conversations about marijuana are done in the city of Fresno. I actually don't mind Councilman Olivier's goal of hearing this out further when we talk about medicinal marijuana, for instance. But today, I think we prepped for recreational marijuana sales and some, and some ordinances that go with that. So my motion is to amend Councilman Olivier's motion to go back to the original documents that we were going to vote on today.
All right, you know what, can we just call the question? No. Well, you're not punched up. Now you're punched up. All right. You know, just, just, there, there is a process. The, the process of Robert's rules and the way that the, the council rules work allow the council president great discretion and great authority to do that. It wasn't an attempt to pull a fast one or deceive you or, or torpedo the plans you made. The council president has the authority and the leeway to exercise that power if he so chooses. It's very, very rarely ever used, not since I've been here, but the issue was important enough to me to, to, to go ahead and utilize that power. So just, just so that folks know why I, I did that. Member Bretafeld and Member Baines, thank you, Member Brandal.
Okay, so before, I want to clarify the City Attorney. So after we're done with our remarks, we're going to vote on Councilmember Brandal's amended motion.
Yes, you would always take up a motion to amend before the main motion.
Okay, thank you. Unfortunately, the mayor had to leave because he had to go to another meeting, and he wanted me to offer a couple of comments on his behalf, which I will do and also share my own. He, I, he and I, Chief Dyer, the City Attorney, and the mayor's staff began looking at this in January. He's met with Fresno County officials, with Clovis. He was trying, as we are, to make our, our ordinances as consistent as possible with, with other cities. And he and his staff, John Ellis, people on my staff, Danny Guy, Nicole, and others, did a lot of due diligence researching other cities and states that have legalized marijuana to see how their decisions affected their communities. And we looked at recreational marijuana, we looked at Washington, state of Oregon, and what we've seen is there's been a lot of inconsistent results. There are studies that support people who want to ban these dispensaries. There's others who clearly state that these dispensaries create crime, and we wouldn't want to do that. In every case, though, every city that legalized marijuana have had unintended consequences from their actions, whether it's public safety, health, code enforcement issues, that's been clear. For the mayor, he's expressed that this is both a moral issue and a financial issue. And in his mind, the moral issue rises above the financial issue. And for that reason, he clearly doesn't support this. I want to say that, as Councilmember Brandal was saying, Prop 64 passed, and it allows people who want to smoke marijuana to do so. Nothing we do here today changes that. You can grow six plants, you can smoke marijuana in your home, and there's nothing we can, to do to change that. Now, I didn't support Prop 64. My district didn't support Prop 64. I think Prop 64 will create problems just as Prop 47 and Prop 57, that is sold as something that was going to have safer communities. It's been anything but that. It's made our community safe, and I think Prop 64 will do the same. However, having said that, I respect the fact that Prop 64 passed. Now, for me, looking at what's happened in other states, there's been no doubt that there's been increased drug usage among young people. And for me, that's the biggest concern about this. I have no problem with adults who choose to smoke marijuana, and I want to make it very clear, we're not talking about medicinal marijuana. I think there are clearly medicinal components to marijuana that help people, people who have illnesses, and I support that. I support people who are truly ill. If medicinal marijuana helps them, I have no problem with that. And that may be something that this council takes up in the future. A couple of years ago, the council banned medicinal dispensaries and operations. That was done several years ago. And we're dealing with the recreational, but I think there's enough of us up here who believe that there is obviously benefit for medicinal marijuana. Now, that doesn't mean that come down the pike, I'm going to support it like Councilman Brandal. I'm going to have to take a look at it and see what is brought forward. But today, we're dealing with recreational dispensaries. And the passage of marijuana and the usage of marijuana, without any question for me, has created problems in other communities. We've seen highway fatalities increases, we've seen car crashes. In Pueblo, Colorado, they've talked about increased homelessness. We've had pastors who work with young people who have all kinds of problems with marijuana. I've been a psychologist for 30 years, trust me. I've seen lots of people who have all kinds of problems smoking marijuana. That's young people and adults. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't people who smoke marijuana, don't have problems. But I also know that there are a component... that there are components of smoking marijuana, particularly with young, that has adverse effects. Science has shown that young people's brains are developing up until the age of 25, and when you're smoking marijuana, it has been shown that it has adverse effects, emotionally, cognitively, socially, some have gone psychotic. These are scientific facts. It's indisputable that young people are adversely affected by smoking marijuana, and anybody who works with the youth and sees them smoking marijuana knows there are problems with it. It's indisputable. There is, it was brought up about these dispensaries going south of Shaw or other areas. I have no doubt that that's going to be the impact. We will see some of these dispensaries, but they will be in poorer neighborhoods, and those poorer neighborhoods will be adversely affected. I have no doubt they will draw crime. And the argument about, well, people use it, so why not legalize it? Well, one can make the argument, there are opiates that are illegal, there's heroin that's illegal, where does it stop? And I know people say, well, marijuana is not opiates, it's not meth, no it isn't, but to say that it's as simple as taking an aspirin is disingenuous at best. So for me, this dispensary and having recreational dispensaries is a problem, because it sends a message to our youth that this is okay, and it isn't okay. I don't think it's okay. I don't think Prop 64 frankly is okay, but it passed. But Prop 64, as I respect the right of people to smoke, because Prop 64 says that you can, Prop 64 also gave municipalities the right to ban dispensaries. They gave every city the right to restrict them. That's Prop 64. And so I think it is wise for us to restrict it, and the mayor has said, let's look at this in 12 months, let's review it in 12 months, let's see what impacts we've had. This is something the council can review again, we can make modifications, we can change it, we can see what impacts. And I support that. Let's take a look. But today, we have to make a decision about whether to ban these things or not, because if we don't ban it, as of January 1st, 2018, by right, these dispensaries can come in. So I implore, I implore the City Council to support Councilman Brandow's motion that we look at the proposed motion, which is put forward by the mayor and myself, to ban these recreational dispensaries, and we do what's right for our youth, and we send the right message to our community that we don't support these kinds of things. They're a problem in our community, and they're going to just make a problem worse. Thanks.
Okay, Member Baines?
Thanks, Council President, even though you were trying to silence me a moment ago.
I yanked that microphone out of there quicker than you can say.
I know, I know, you being a dictator up here. Anyhow, listen, I want to make a couple of comments, and in many respects, I think returning the motion back to its original form may make this day easier and quicker. So I think I understand what you were trying to do, Council President, but we may be out of here sooner rather than later. So this has been a bit of a journey for me on this, and I'll tell you why. First of all, I did not support Prop 64 individually, and many of you, many of you in here know that, for a whole host of reasons that I don't necessarily need to get into, but for me, I was not supportive of recreational use, just as an individual. I think some of the comments that have been said today about what, I think, I think it was the chief that mentioned it, is one of my, one of my strongest arguments for today's strain of marijuana is much different than it was in the 60s and the 70s. And I think there's some truth to that in a lot of ways. I've talked to chemists that verify that, I've read scientific studies that verify that. So I do know from a practical perspective that what, what people smoke today is not what they smoked a few years ago. So for that reason, I did not support Proposition 64. Now, the state of California supported Proposition 64, and my district supported Proposition 64, so my personal opinions were inconsistent with those in my district. So I wrestled with that, and as I've known that this item was coming over the last few months, I've been unsettled about how I would approach this. In one sense, you know, we are in a representative democracy, and we're elected to represent the voices of our constituents. That's what we're elected to do. But, just to be honest, there are many times when we think we know better than our constituents, and we may vote in some cases inconsistent with what they think at the time. There have been many times where I've taken votes, and some of my constituents have been unhappy with me, and I think that that's probably true for all my colleagues up here. So I want to, I want to start by acknowledging that. It's a, it's a, it's an interesting line that we are trying to parse here. At what point do you completely represent the interests of your constituents, and then what point do you think that you know better than them, even when they've spoken loud and clear? And the reason why I say they've spoken loud and clear is because in this instance, there are a lot of times when we're not sure where the majority of our constituents land, right? We have a community meeting, 50 people show up, and we think that in some cases that may represent, you know, 70,000 folks, and we know that that's not really the case, right? We know that, you know, a community meeting doesn't really represent the full breadth of a district or your constituents. We know that. In this case, though, it's a little different. We actually have the statistics of how each of our districts voted about this issue. So we don't really have to guess. I actually know that 63% of people living in District 3 support recreational use. I know that, it's a statistical fact. I'm not guessing, it just is. And in this case, it's, so I'm not guessing anymore. I'm not having to hold a community meeting, and I'm not having to read emails or field phone calls. I know where my district stands, and they overwhelmingly support it. And for that matter, the city of Fresno supported it as well, not as overwhelmingly. I think it only passed by 51%, but we know that this city supports recreational use. So that has always, that has always given me, that has always given me a bit of a conflict. And in some cases, I've been very comfortable with going against you guys, right? And I even, I even think I started there because of my personal and moral convictions about, about recreational marijuana use personally. Personally, I am opposed to that. But I began challenging myself on a couple of issues about, is this an attempt, a ban on recreational dispensaries? Is it an attempt to undermine and thwart the will of the people? It's a legitimate question that we as policymakers should be asking ourselves. We should be asking ourselves, is this an attempt for us to impose our values on you when you have told us what you want to do? That's a legitimate question that we have to wrestle with. It's the role that we're in. You know, we are not pastors, we're not law enforcement, we're not community advocates, we're not medicinal users, we are policymakers. And we should be in the role of policymakers when we make these decisions. So they're not easy, folks, and I'm being honest with you. I think Councilmember Brettafield and Brandow are right on many, in many respects. I think that they have articulated well-thought-out arguments and personal arguments and convictions about this, and it is, to me, this is not a black and white or a black and white issue. It lives in areas of gray, at least for me. And so I commend, I commend Councilmember Brettafield for bringing this argument, because it is a discussion that we should have. We should be having this discussion as a community, and we may fall on different sides of it, but we definitely should be having the discussion. So I'm kind of talking you through my progress. I heard a lot of people talk about the youth, and rightfully so. As a matter of fact, when I voted against Proposition 64, it was the youth that I had in mind because of, because of what I believe that the strains of marijuana do to a young person's mind right now. That was actually one of the driving factors for me. But it did pass. And what I've struggled with is the practicality of what's really happening. Practically speaking, in the real world, the youth are smoking marijuana, and it's not because we have dispensaries. It's not because we have retail outlets. It's because it's hidden underground, it's very easy to get, and it's unregulated. It's easy. So I share the passion about worrying about our youth having access to what could be in some minds a dangerous drug. However, the reality is that, one, it is a legal drug in the state of California and in the city of Fresno, and, two, without some type of regulation, I'm not exactly sure we ever stop the youth from accessing it. Not unless, so I struggle with the practicality of the argument of having a retail store making it easier for our young people to access marijuana. I'm not, I don't track the logic for what's really happening. In some cases, when you have a retail store, if we, if we actually regulate this, we probably would do more, more good to our young people not having the same amount of access than we do if we pretend, like if we just ban it, that they won't get it. I, I think it's a, I think it's a false argument, and I know several of you made it, and I'm not, and I don't, and I don't say that, and I'm not saying that for applause, folks. I'm not saying that for applause, because it's not, it's not completely invalid. I understand where people are coming from with that. It is a valid concern, but I'm not, I'm not exactly sure the logic completely tracks with the argument. If we really want our, if we really don't want our youth using it, then we should be doing everything we can to make sure they don't, they don't have access to it. One of the ways that we do that in this country is we regulate things. That's how we do that. My colleague talked a lot about the prohibition of the 1920s and what happened with that, and I've studied some of that myself, Council President, and he's right. Without any regulation, kids were dying. Bootlickers were running rampant. Now that we have regulation, and I'm not saying that we have completely gone away from our young people using alcohol, however, I tell you what, it's not that easy for them to get. It's not as easy as it used to be. I'll bet you it's easier for a young person to buy marijuana than it is to buy alcohol. So I commend you, Council President, for making that argument. So again, I listened to the worry about our young people, but again, I don't, not exactly sure the logic tracks completely with the argument. And finally, for me, what it really came down to was the black market. Many of you, particularly earlier on in your remarks, and I shared this privately with my friend and colleague, Councilmember Brettafield, that is the argument that troubled me more than anything, actually. So while there are times where I go against the will of my constituents, there are times when I can totally understand the argument about the youth, what troubled me more than anything is I am passionate about gang violence and the violence that happens in my city. I do a lot, I spend a lot of my personal time combating that in a whole host of ways. And I can tell you that, that I know for certain, a lot of our gang members and gang activity is fueled by drugs, marijuana being one of those drugs. It exists in that world. When gang members sell pot to one of these kids, they're using that money to go buy a gun. They're using that money to go buy women. They're using that money to further illicit criminal enterprises. My problem with not even trying to regulate this industry that is actually legal is that we have now cemented it for the black market. We have now made, we have now, someone mentioned, given them a monopoly, which is absolutely true in my mind. We have ensured that those dollars, because people are going to do it because it is legal, we have almost ensured that they can capture them, that the illicit criminal enterprises can capture what would otherwise be legal purchases and further criminal activity. So for me, folks, despite my moral and personal objections to marijuana use, I can't in good conscience do something that I think cements illegal activity. I can't do it. And that's, that's the main reason why. So what I, what I think, what I think, what I think was, what I think had some wisdom, Council President, was the fact that what you were trying to do, if I understood your motion correctly, was to at least actually bring this count, this body back, the option of what, what a regulated industry could look like as opposed to a ban. I don't even think we've had that chance as a body to even examine that. We haven't even had that opportunity, and I think the way that the motion was framed, he did that so it was back to us in November, which still gives, gave us plenty of time to ban it if we didn't like what was brought back to us.
That's right.
But, but, you know, so I think, I think it, I think it was, I think it was a practical approach, and it's a deliberative approach, and I think that you all want that from us. You all want us to be able to weigh options for this community realistically. And we have not, frankly, folks, we have not had that opportunity yet, and a ban removes that from the discussion, where we don't even know what the regulation could look like. I completely agree with my council colleague, Steve Brandow, who saw it well-articulated, the ills that happened to my community. Well, there are ways to get around that if we know that upfront. There are things that we can drop in, in policy and legislation that can prevent those very things we don't want to happen, because we can call them out beforehand. There are things that we can do, so, so, and I, and I, and I, and I think, I think the Council President's motion allowed for that very thing. So for all of those reasons, as I stated, I appreciate my, you all and my colleagues indulging me in a few more moments, but I thought it was important for me to walk you through my own process. It was a very difficult, it's very difficult for me because of my personal and moral convictions about this, but I realize that my moral convictions did not line up with what is practically happening and what is being asked of me as a policymaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Soraya.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, I echo some of the same words that were just shared by my colleague, by Councilmember Baines. I too, and I just want to be clear, I too voted against Prop 64 when it came up in this last election cycle, but I will say that, similar to Oliver Baines, to Oliver Baines, I don't want to let my personal persuasions really trump democracy. I've heard a lot from my constituents, from people that live in my district that overwhelmingly supported this issue. 57% of the voters said that they wanted to allow recreational marijuana. I, as an elected official, took a note to honor the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of our state of California, and those constitutional obligations include upholding state laws, and in this, in this case, the law is clear. It allows us to set reasonable regulations. I share the same concerns that many of you have echoed about access for young people and what it can do to young people. I too share those same concerns, and I would want to figure out how is it that we can work together to ensure that we limit the access to young people. I also just want to share, and I'll just keep my remarks very short, I would have liked to have the opportunity, and I would like to have the opportunity to continue to have this discussion about what would be reasonable and what would be helpful to ensure not only safe access for folks that just spoke very clearly about the need that exists here. I know that today, my colleague brought forth the recreational ban, but I think that it's important that we're also talking about the medicinal component of cannabis. It's been an issue that for a long time, folks have been coming to City Hall and asking for the help to create reasonable and safe access to folks that live here in our community, our veterans. I think one of the gentlemen's that, a number of the gentlemen's that spoke here as veterans, and I think there's a woman veteran as well, thank you for your service. And it's heart-wrenching to hear the stories about the fact that they went to serve our country, and when they come back with great need to use cannabis to alleviate some of that pain and suffering and conditions that they've experienced as a result of being in combat, that they don't have safe, a safe way to access cannabis here in our community. And so I would hope that this council would allow us the time. I don't think that we're in a rush. The Prop 64 has allowed us, I believe till the end of the year, to come up with some sensible regulation or aggressive regulation, if that's what we want to do. some sensible regulation or aggressive regulation, if that's what we want to do, so that not only do we assure safe access, but that our neighborhoods are safe. I would never support anything that would jeopardize the safety within our neighborhoods. And so, I would just like to see if we could continue to have the discussion on this issue before just doing a complete ban. I did notice in, you know, in reading through the, through the ordinance, it reads that, I believe that even in public, people can't smoke, even though it's legal. I'm just wondering, you know, the, the ability to enforce that. How, how, how is it that, you know, our PD will, will deal with that? We already know we have limited services. Is it going to be PD? Will it be code enforcement dealing with, you know, going out to homes and regulating or ensuring that people are following the regulations or the ban that is in, in writing before us? And so, I think that there's still some questions to be answered regarding the process. And I just, today I won't be able to support a complete ban.
Member Capriolo. Member Capriolo?
Thank you, Council President. You know, this has been, thank you all for being here. That's just what makes the democracy in the USA the greatest country in the world, is people like you coming forward and voicing your opinions and participating and voting, and that's what makes us great. So thanks for being here. I'd also like to say, you know, I work with some of the best leaders I've ever come into contact with and I've ever known, and that's the people on this dais. And I'm proud to be part of it, and I want to continue the openness and the ability to discuss things like we're doing here and being civil about it and analytical about it and digging deep into it. And it's, it's a pleasure and an honor for me to be part of this group. So, I've had, like most of us, a lot of struggles with this. And before I go too far, I want to thank that, all of the veterans and particularly the young man that had three tours. My brother was a combat veteran, and you sir, I can't thank you enough, really. Round of applause, can we give him a round of applause, really? And you know, folks, that was from both sides of the aisle, and that's what we're about here too. We can make things happen, we can create things, we can do a better job each and every day that we're here. So with that in mind, I agree with two of my colleagues here, Member Brandow and Member Baines, the B and B factor, I call them. Great points, well articulated, well thought out, and the two of you kind of summed up what I would discuss myself, so I'm not going to do that. But thank you so much for, for putting it out there as well as you did. You know, there's an option here that I think we've overlooked, and the mayor wanted to make sure we had the one-year option here. So after one year, we can revisit this issue and discuss it and see how it's working, whether the good and the bad and the in-between. And that doesn't mean we have to wait a year. This body is a moving body, a living body. We can bring stuff up here anytime we want to. And if you or us or the totality of this room come up with something a little bit bigger or better than what we've discussed today, let's, let's keep this thing going. This isn't the end-all, this isn't the final product that you're hearing and seeing today. So keep that in mind, please. So with that in mind, I must say that, Member Brandow, I would support your motion.
Okay, the screen is clear, folks, that means we're getting close to a vote. So, city attorney, we're gonna, excuse me, city attorney, I just had a, I just kind of had some inspiration and thought of an idea. Is there a way that this doesn't have to be an either/or? Could this be like a both and? And could we do my motion as well as Member Brettafield's motion? Is there a way that we could get there?
Yes, since this is initiation, the council could actually initiate the process in two alternatives that would both go through the community meetings, Airport Land Use Commission, Planning Commission, come to council for the final vote, and then the council could pick which version it wanted then. That's an option too.
So it would, we could vote ultimately, we would know where, we would just know more about the regulatory package, we would know exactly what we're voting on at that time. So we would have, both sides could be presented and we would have more red meat to chew on in terms of now we're voting for a comprehensive ban, but we don't even know what it would be like, what kind of regulations would be in place if we were to allow retail and, and delivery services, right?
I, I would say you could choose which option at the end of the process rather than at the beginning of the process. That would be the option.
So how, how should I, how should I ask for that? I mean, I can ask Member Brettafield if he would include, if you could include my motion to, is that how I should do it? Ask for a friend, or it's you who made the motion, Member Brand. I could ask for a friendly amendment, or, or I could now make another motion to kind of trump his motion?
Well, there's a motion to amend pending, so you have to vote on that first.
His government, folks.
Unless both of those are withdrawn, and there's another motion made to start the process for both options. You could vote on both of these options. If they both receive a majority, then both would go forward.
Might I speak on this?
Yeah, please, you're punched up.
I think we're confusing the issue. I think we should decide on whether we support this ban on recreational dispensaries or not. We, as the mayor, Councilman Capriolo and I have alluded to, this can be reviewed in a year or less. I think voting on both of these would be nothing but confusion to our community, and I think they deserve more than that. We either support these recreational dispensaries or we don't. We're either banning them or we're not. It's very clear. And so, I would say, Member Brandow's motion is on the table, let's vote on it, and let's follow the standard process before we really just, this gets muddled.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. The screen is clear, please cast your votes. Yes is to...
Go ahead, you want to just clarify what the motion is for?
Yes is to support what was basically the original package that was brought forward by Member Brettafield and also Mayor Brand. And no is to reject that. Please cast your votes. Motion carries four to three for yes and three no. Thank you, council.
Well, we're not done. We're not done, Steve. Now we have to vote on the motion. Now we have to vote on...
Counsel, that, that was a substitute motion, that in effect mooted the original motion.
Yeah, so, that's everything.
Now we have to vote on the...
It's the exact same thing now.
Okay, bye.
Thank you all.